Welcome everyone to City Council Regular Meeting for tonight, Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023. We call the meeting to order. Our pledge of the flag tonight is led by Mayor Ray Al, Grandview Elementary School. Where's the mayor? All right, man, come on down.
Please stand, put your right hand over your heart, remove all hats and hoodies, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't go anywhere, hang on.
Recording in progress.
Tell us a little more about her.
Good evening. My name is Tara Grings, and I am the proud principal of Grandview Elementary School. I am thrilled to announce that 5th grader Maya Rao has been nominated for the Manhattan Beach Student Pledge Program for Outstanding Citizenship. The entire 5th grade team of teachers recognized Maya as an incredible leader. Her teacher, Mrs. Kinzer, who is a tough teacher, says Maya is dependable, organized, polite, and always able to work with a wide range of peers. One thing I love about Maya is her incredible sense of humor. Mrs. Kinzer, her teacher, often jokes that when the class is a bit noisy, she jokingly accuses Maya because it's never her. Maya's parents shared that Maya enjoys Indian classical dance and art. This past weekend, she performed in the Manhattan Beach Unified School District's 6th Annual International Day. Maya loves her grandparents, and according to her mom, she sometimes says she would prefer to live with them. Maya, her grandparents did help to raise her, or they're helping to raise her, and create the person that she is today. I especially respect Maya's ability to see the good in any situation, her can-do attitude, and her ability to persevere through any circumstance. Congratulations, Maya. You are a model gator, and we are so proud to honor your efforts today.
And Maya, besides your grandparents, I wonder who's here tonight you want to thank?
I want to thank my principal and my teachers for nominating me to get this award tonight. I'm really honored, and I want to just thank everyone here for being here. I feel really special, and thank you so much. Thank you so much, guys. You're like the best.
Anyone else you want to thank while you're here?
My mom and my dad were really good in the process of this.
Anybody else?
And my grandparents, too.
Because she taught me something new tonight. I waited for someone to say, "Add to your pledge tonight, remove your caps." That's a huge deal. Thank you for doing that for us. So, our Vice Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Joe Franklin, has got a present for you here. We recognize you as being special, right? The best. And from all the council, City of Manhattan Beach and Manhattan Beach Unified School District recognize you, Mayor Rao, Grandview Elementary School, as our citizenship, I say citizenship, Manhattan Beach Unified School District dated today, May 2nd, 2023. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's for you. Make sure point towards him for you to get pictures of you holding that up. And now, all the councils are going to stand. Get a picture, how's that? We're going to aim towards Mom and Dad taking pictures. And friends and family. And now, lastly, lady in the middle, she's with us.
Got it. Thank you.
As Steve, you'd say, "For Mayor Napolitano," it'll all go downhill from here, right? Sorry, folks. All right, we'll do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Haworth?
Here.
Councilmember Lester?
Here.
Councilmember Napolitano?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin?
Here.
Mayor Montgomery?
And I am here as well. Our next Item D up ceremonial calendar, let's get this here, we're all set. And that is our presentation certificates of recognition to Maricosta High School students, Ryan Cho, Lizzie Fleming, and Bryde Ward for receiving 2023 Circle Award for Excellence in Poetry Composition. So if they're all here, you guys, three, come on down. You're going to be here. Who's going to go first?
I think Eric's going to say.
Eric, come on up.
Thank you.
Hello.
You get a minute to fill us in what's going on.
I can probably do it in 30 seconds.
Perfect, you're my kind of guy.
Okay, I'm Eric, and this is Betty Carroll, and we're members of the Manhattan Beach Poetry Circle, and it's sponsored by the Older Adults Program here for the Manhattan Beach Parks and Rec, led by Jan Buick. And we've been collaborating with these guys, I guess, for like 10 years. I haven't been there 10 years, but I trust Bob Perkins, who is our fearless leader. And we've visited their classrooms, they have come to see our meetings, and this year we read together at the Hometown Fair. This is our sixth year giving awards for talented, creative young poets. And Betty Carroll, did you want to jump in here?
I just want to say that I have.
Microphone? Microphone?
I speak loud.
So we can hear you at home.
At home?
At home.
In Oklahoma?
Anywhere.
Worldwide.
Worldwide, we have a camera right there.
Wow. Well, I have only been in the poetry circle for about a year and a half, but I have been to Maricosta several times for your creative writing class, and you listen to our poems, and then you discuss them, and then you give us your poems, and we get to talk about them. And so, we're very, very proud that you are so enthusiastic about your writing. And I wanted to tell you all that when I was there last time, I said to the students, "Now, you know, be sure and carry a pencil and a piece of paper when you're going anyplace so that when your thoughts come around, you might want to write them down." And then I looked at the students, and I thought, "Oh, you've got all sorts of machinery in your backpack and your pocket." So, it's okay if you don't have a pencil and all that. But we really appreciate your writing and for you to get this award. Thank you so much.
And so, this year's recipients of the Circle Award are Bryde Ward, Ryan Cho, and Lizzie Fleming. And they're just as nice as they are talented, they're great to work with.
You do, you're not funny. There you go.
Thank you.
I'm going to read one of those says here. I'll read it since it's one thing they didn't do here. City Council of City of Manhattan Beach, along with Parks Rec Department, Older Adult Program, just hereby proudly recognize Bryde and Lizzie, and Ryan for their receiving 2023 Circle Award for Excellence in Poetry Composition dated 2nd date of May 2023. Let's have a round of applause, everybody.
We have to publish your poems so that everybody here can read them.
Yes, they do.
How do we publish them?
You'll be in charge of that.
Oh, thanks.
Email our city clerk. Lisa, tomorrow, email Lisa, she'll take care of all that for you. Thank you all for being here, I appreciate it. Oh, yes, Council big sorry.
Don't go anywhere.
Don't go anywhere, nice try.
Can't go back to Oklahoma yet.
Aim towards the lady in the center of the dice there, the little plastic cage over there. You guys ready? Look towards the center.
Hey, right here, ready? Gotcha, thanks.
Congratulations, congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I was waiting for a poem.
Our city manager Bruce Mo is very good at limericks and poems, but in order not to spoil the event, decided to pass on that opportunity.
Why is that?
We're going to wait until they calm down a little bit and close that door, then we're going to move to Item E. Approval of Agenda and waiver of forbidding awareness issues will take a minute. Everybody file out. That's a heck of a crowd you guys brought with you.
Sounds like a cool program.
Yeah. My favorite part was that they had to listen to the Older Adults Poetry Program. To me, this was a word by itself, so I was happy for that. All right, council, approval of agenda and waiver of forbidding awareness issues. Anyone pulling the items? Number eight, Your Honor? Number eight, by the Council of Napolitano, consideration to approve the Velze Plague proposed by the South Bay Board Members Club. That's number eight. What else? Any other items? No? I need a motion, everything but number eight. Booed by Councilmember Lester, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Joe Franklin. Roll call, please.
Motion passes 5-0.
Fantastic. Item F, City Council and Community Organization Announcements of Occurring Events. One minute per person, folks. You want to talk on any item, not on the agenda, any announcements, speak here for one minute, and then, lady, you were first.
Thank you. Good evening, it's nice to see you all. I'm Hillary Mahan, Executive Director of the Manhattan Beach Education Foundation, and I wanted to invite you all, including everyone here in the entire community, to our 40th Anniversary Celebration this coming Saturday, May 6th, in Metlock Plaza. It will be occurring between 10:00 and 12:00 noon. It is free to the public, lots of fun activities, as well as honorable citizens and members of our community, and politicians all coming to help celebrate us. Over the past 40 years, our schools have been filled with opportunities that have inspired creativity, built confidence and collaboration, and developed problem-solving and analytical skills, and cultivated that lifelong love of learning that we hope we instill in all students because of the support of our foundation. And it hasn't been the effort of just one, it's been the effort of many, and that's exactly what we're hoping to celebrate on Saturday together. We are also going to be unveiling our special recognition project that our council approved several years back and then continued to move forward. I wanted to thank many people on behalf of the Board of Directors of MBF because truly it was a collaboration, and I think, even though I've said we're unveiling it, it is already up, and I think you'll be amazed at the artistic capabilities not only of the artist, but also of the way in which it really captures education and demonstrates the initiative and what we're hoping to instill in our children. So, very quickly, I would like to say thank you to former Councilmember Hildy Stern, former Councilmember Nancy Hurstman, former Councilmember Suzanne Hadley, Mayor Richard Montgomery, Councilmember Steve Napolitano, Councilmember Joe Franklin, Councilmember Amy Haworth, and Councilmember David Lesser, as well as City Manager Bruce Mo, Mark Layman, Aileen Stewart, Ryan Heiss, Nada Lyle, Nazrin Sazhar, Tricia Herrera, Doug Atkinson, as well as Alexandria Latragna, and Tolga Yaprak, our structural engineer, and of course, our talented Betsy Schultz, who is the artist who helped us commission this art and install it. So, thank you all so much. I hope to see you on Saturday. We will have our own special pins to pass out. I look forward to seeing you. Thank you.
Thank you, Hillary.
It's really beautiful, I've seen it.
Took a sneak peek, it looks great.
It's gorgeous.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm David, and my partner in crime, Mike, we're in the proud class of Leadership Manhattan Beach 2023, and we are here to invite you all to join us in a celebration of our project, The Single Mom Nutrition Pantry at the Richstone Family, what is it, Richstone Family Center in Hawthorne, on May 20th at 10:00 a.m. I'll let Mike do the hard stuff.
Thank you, Fred. I mean, Dave.
I mean, Doug.
Yep. The heartfelt part of this for me is that this is a unique project for Leadership Manhattan Beach because we are actually blessing a different community, sister community Hawthorne, with some resources. Not only do single moms need pantries that provide nutritional substance, we also are providing scholarships for these single moms to get trained in nutrition, and so, we're pretty excited about that, and it was the brainchild of a Maricosta high school student who's part of our Leadership Manhattan Beach project. So, please, join us with the ribbon-cutting ceremony and celebrate a big win for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. I'm going to put a different hat on. David Archer, Manhattan Beach Chamber of Commerce, Honorable Mayor, City Council members. I'm here to invite you to our phenomenal women event coming up on May 11th at the Connecta Campus over off of Park Place, and it's going to be from 10:00 to 2:00. We'd like to invite you all out and the community as well. We look forward to seeing you. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Josh Murray, and I'm here on behalf of Manhattan Beach Library. I'd like to invite the adults of the community to learn how to make a Taiwanese pineapple pastry on Saturday, May 27th, from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. In honor of Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, come to the library to learn from Baker Phoebe Chow how to make Taiwan's famous souvenir pastry made from scratch with 100% pineapple. Registration for this free event is available on our website, lacountylibrary.org, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Josh. I know you guys are excited about that stuff, so. Who's our next public speaker? Ah, chief.
Good evening, Mayor Montgomery, members of the City Council, Rachel Johnson, your police chief. I just wanted to take a brief moment to invite the community out to Suzie Cakes next Tuesday, May 9th, from noon to 3:00 for cupcakes with a cop. And who doesn't like cupcakes with little circles of joy? So, come on out, meet your police officers, meet your police department, and learn a little more about what we do, and learn a little more about Neighborhood Watch. So, I'll see you next Tuesday between noon and 3:00 at Suzie Cakes.
Thank you, chief. You had us at Suzie Cakes.
Are there social media cards, like, that we could share with, on our networks? Because that's just such a fabulous thing, I'd love to push it out.
I can certainly send you a flyer, and we post it on our socials, and it's on the city calendar as well.
Great, thank you so much, chief.
Our next public speaker, community announcements. Anyone? No one's pushed a button on council?
Oh, I had.
Councilwoman Haworth.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam City Clerk, can you put up my, I want to announce an event, it's happening on May 18th, but I wanted to announce it now. Is it up? There we go, it's coming. In honor of Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, which is observed, it's the month of May, as is also Jewish American Heritage Month, and it's important because it recognizes the contributions and influences of Asian Americans and Pacific Islander Americans in our history and culture. We know, it's great to learn about all that, and as such, on May 18th, there's a documentary screening of the film Grandpa Cherry Blossom, which of course, is about Mr. Francis Uyama Tsu, who had such a successful chameleon nursery here in the South Bay where Maricosta High School is now. So, there's information about it there. It's, this film is made by a Maricosta, I don't know if he's still a student or an alumni, but it should be a really wonderful event, so I wanted to point that out.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? I have two. Martha, put our first up there, please. There it is. Today was an exciting coffee day at Peet's. We go both east and west, Peet's on the west side, and then the Coffee Bean Village on the east side, so a lot of makeup days for me catching back up. So, next one now is May 8th at Coffee Bean, and what time is that, Martha? Are we, I can't scroll down there. 3:30. 3:30, there we go. That's all are welcome to attend, and that's out there. The second one is, I was mentioning earlier, I missed over an announcement, I usually start it now, that Councilor Vice Mayor Franklin and I started this thing, and all of council likes this. We'd like to recognize all veterans, current active military personnel, and current military reserves, reservists. Would you please all stand up and be recognized? I want to make sure, anybody here that's there? Chief Johnson there? One of those who make it possible for us to be here tonight, so thank you all for your service. Remind me to keep doing that joke, sometimes I'll forget every time. And my last item, after the Juneteenth comments at council, most of you have read or seen online, a couple of residents reminded me, and correctly so, that during COVID, we had announcements at some, not just on social media, which is somewhat suspect that it's actually accurate. In this case, it was, we were contacted, or the city had talked about hosting a concert at the park for an artist called Hurt, H-E-R. Actually, not true. We did not get a notice or a request. Brad Pitt reached out to us. Brad has not called me back, I'm doing a movie here, and LeBron James currently busy, but his company has not called me back either about filming the Bruce family story anywhere in the city. So, to put those rumors to rest, that's a status 2020, and we'll have to wait until things happen from that point forward. After that, let's go to public comments, three minutes per person, and I'm going to give a little background for the first timers that are here tonight.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We have one more community announcement. I'd like to introduce Talene Merzakanyan, our new community development director.
Yes, please.
I thought you were saving that, Bruce. My fault.
Brad Pitt asked him to do it now.
Yeah. I need to get updated by Brad Pitt, way to go.
Okay. Well, I'd like to introduce Talene Merzakanyan, and she's our new community development director. She looks familiar, it's because she's our planning manager prior to that. She joined us in November of 2020 in the middle of the pandemic, served as our planning manager, and most recently was our acting community development director. Talene has excellent experience with many planning issues. She served at the City of Pasadena for 13 years, where she rose to planning manager. She was at City of Calabasas for 12 years, senior planner, and she's had planning experience solidly in her education, having graduated from UCLA with a degree in urban planning and development, public policy and sociology, and then getting a master of planning from USC. Talene has handled some pretty weighty issues in her time here with the city, the six-cycle housing element, outdoor dining, the High Rose Project, the list goes on. But we hired Talene because she's very capable, dedicated, hardworking, works a lot of hours, gets the job done, deeply experienced in planning issues, as I said. She promotes great customer service, and she's proven to be a great recruiter, as we're filling many of the vacancies that we've had, which is great news for the community so we can get those permits processed as quickly as possible. So, with that, congratulations, Talene. So happy you accepted the position, I wish you much success.
Thank you.
All right. The team, the team.
Thank you. I would just like to say that I'm honored to be serving this community in this new role, and I am incredibly grateful for being entrusted with this opportunity. Thank you.
There you go. Everyone gets, I don't know where it's written here. I'm going to make this official. Now we're live. Everyone gets this. You've been to the city, visited the city, come to council, it's for our guests, someone we recognize. So, our first official city pin from council. As your new job, congratulations. Thank you for answering emails 11:30 at night, appreciate that. Good job. Have fun, enjoy yourself.
Thank you, I will.
Glad you're here.
Please, picture.
Oh. Yeah, you want to get team pictures? Where are you guys going?
Yeah, where's the pin?
Hands in the hand by now. This may be the last smile you have.
Thank you.
Couple hours. Now, we're back on the schedule. Public comments, three minutes per person for the first timers that are here. Speakers may provide public comments on any matter that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council, including items on the agenda. The mayor may determine whether all items should be, are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. While all comments are welcome, the Brown Act does not allow city council to take action on any item not on the agenda. I'm going to add that up, folks. Early March, I brought this up. Our basic rules we've had on there on the wall, and no one actually reads those anymore. Please have the courtesy to turn your phone off when you're here. If you don't turn it off, turn it on silent or vibrate. You have a conversation, take it out in the lobby, and find no cheering or clapping except for you, Tracy, and Roe during leadership comments, because it disrupts our meeting. The governor's made it clear, you disrupt the meeting, we ask you to leave the council meeting, council, period. Have you step outside. If you don't want to do that, an officer will escort you out. So, everybody clear about disrupting meetings here. It's a business meeting, we want you to talk, all are welcome, but once you disrupt it, you ruin it for everybody else. So, with that said, move forward, public comments, three minutes. Our first speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Montgomery and members of the city council. My name is Emory Chen, I'm the Director of Youth Services at Beach Cities Health District.
All right.
We are grateful to the City of Manhattan Beach for declaring May Mental Health Awareness Month. We are especially thankful for the city's partnership in Beach Cities Health District's community-wide campaign called Mental Health is Health. Mental health is one of BCHD's four health priorities, and data shows that Beach Cities communities is healthy on the outside but continues to reflect high rates of stress, bullying, and substance use. This is reinforced by the national statistic that one in five people in the U.S. will experience mental health illness in a given year. Thirty-seven percent of Beach Cities 11th graders are reporting experiencing chronic sadness or hopelessness in the last 12 months, and nearly half of Beach Cities residents report experiencing feelings of stress during a lot of the day. Mental health is an important part of overall health, and focusing on it across lifespan presents an opportunity for dramatic improvement in well-being. BCHD applied and was awarded a grant for the Take Action for Mental Health Los Angeles County Mental Health Awareness Month Community Grant. The campaign aims to decrease stigma, increase help-seeking behaviors, increase awareness of and access to resources for mental health, and build community capacity to support individuals who need mental health resources. Beach Cities Health District's Mental Health is Health campaign will highlight the importance of mental health, encourage residents to check in, get support, and attend an event. We have over 15 events you can attend, including our mindfulness summit we're hosting at Paris Middle School, mental health first-day trainings on May 23rd and June 9th, and a mental health in the workplace workshop on May 31st. Please check out our campaign and other full calendar events at www.bchd.org/mentalhealthawareness. Thank you again so much to the City of Manhattan Beach for your support.
Thank you. We appreciate Beach Cities Health District. We appreciate you and the Director Backley and your resources for our residents, much appreciated. Ah, two of you. Should save my speech then.
Good evening, council. My name is Jackson Zawaki, and I'm a current senior at Maricosta High School, and also a member on the Beach Cities Health District Youth Advisory Council. I work with Emory. So, as it's Mental Health Awareness Month, I wanted to talk briefly about the importance of mental health in our youth, especially the status of many adolescents right now, and some helpful resources along with that. I'll talk mostly about stress, although the resources I mention are available to anyone struggling with anything that they must be going through. Working with all the youth on BCHD, we've established that there are two main types of stress that youth are facing now, general stress and seasonal stress. General stress is typically annual and comes from things like grades, family issues, extracurricular activities, and other societal pressures. As students, of course, we all want to perform well in school, but there can also be family issues and conflicts that differ from person to person, as well as other similar issues that linger in the back of adolescents' minds that contribute to this general stress. The other stress is seasonal stress, and this is what many youth are experiencing right now. Seasonal stress is at the forefront of our minds and exacerbates general stress immensely. And being May, I'm sure many of you could guess that right now, this seasonal stress comes in the form of AP exams, finals, playoffs from sports, and other sorts of competitions. I can speak from firsthand experience here, as I actually just came from my AP Environmental Science exam this morning, have baseball playoffs on Thursday, more AP exams next week, and so on. So, needless to say, we can get pretty cramped during times like this. So, at BCHD, we're actually trying our best to promote awareness for these mental health issues, and are even making videos right now on different issues posing danger to youth, and stress management being one of them. Our overall goal is to de-stigmatize asking for help and spread awareness of youth mental health issues. health issues. That being said, this brings me to Al Cove, which is a valuable resource for any youth struggling with mental health or who just needs a place to relax. The Al Cove facility on 514 North Prospect Avenue provides quiet areas and adult aid for youth if needed. So please, if you recognize youth struggling with mental health issues or are directly asked for a resource, please point them in the direction of Al Cove or BCHD. Thank you, and happy Mental Health Awareness Month.
Thank you. So how about a website and a phone number before you go?
A website and a phone number? Well, the website is, you can just search up Al Cove, especially, or if you just search up Al Cove BCHD, that'll come up. Phone number, I don't know off the top of my head. I can look it up right now if you would like me to.
The website address for BCHD itself?
Uh, yes, here. Do you want me to? Yes, I'll look it up really quickly.
All right.
And Al Cove is with two L's, right?
Yes.
A-L-L-C-O-V.
Lowercase a, too. It's A-L-L-C-O-V-E.
All right. Wait for a second while he searches the website address for his.
No pressure. No stress.
His employer.
Okay, I have the phone number.
Right. And website?
And, I mean, the website, let's see, is just... BCHD.org.
There you go. Well done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council.
You're welcome. All right, our next speaker. Hi, Libby.
Good evening, Mayor Montgomery and members of the city council. My name is Libby Brethauer, Financial Services Manager, and I'm here tonight to share a few updates on the city's utility billing operation. In 2022, our Public Works Department successfully installed Advanced Metering Infrastructure, or AMI, to our 13,500 utility billing accounts. With these new advanced digital water meters, utility accounts throughout the city are now electronically read daily instead of being manually read every two months. So also, over the last 14 months, our revenue team has been hard at work at implementing a new utility billing module that's fully integrated with our financial software system, which internally has streamlined our accounting and reconciliation procedures. The billing efficiencies we gained from both the AMI and utility billing projects recently earned the city the Lighthouse Award from the California Municipal Revenue and Tax Association, which is awarded annually to one California city for an outstanding achievement that resulted in an efficient and effective delivery of services. So with our utility billing implementation now complete, all utility billing customers have received a bill with our new bill design format, and their new account number and customer number. So the last piece to our utility software enhancements is now rolling out in May. The My Water Advisor informational flyer that you've probably been reading on the screen as I've been talking is also available online at www.manhattenbeach.gov/AMI, and will also be included in all utility bills in May and June. The city's new Water Advisor portal is available now for customers to sign up by using your new account number and your name as it appears on your latest bill. So we're encouraging all utility billing customers to create a My Water Advisor account to view daily water consumption usage, set up leak alerts, and more. The automatic leak alerts can ping customers and the city when a spike in consumption occurs, thereby allowing the issue to be fixed more quickly and reduce the amount of wasted water, which helps with our overall conservation goals and saves the customer money. So please sign up tonight for My Water Advisor and contact our utility billing team with any questions at 310-802-5559, or email us at revenue@manhattanbeach.gov. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you for both the phone number and website and email address. We like that. Now on, that'll be our standard. Phone number and our website or email address. Our next speaker? Seeing none here. How about Zoom, Martha? No one there? Anybody else? All right, closed public comment. Move to item eight, consent calendar approval. With the exception of number eight, of course. I have a first by Councilor Lesser and a second by Councilor Hoerth. The comments? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Great. And next, item pulled from consent is item number eight by Councilman Napolitano.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I pulled this, you know, the last time we spoke about this, there was enough ambiguity that I thought a friendly boast was warranted, much like the Surf City rivalry between, I think it's Santa Cruz and Huntington Beach. But since we last talked, we've had significant input by folks who are historians, local historians, and have provided some substantial information that does call into question the whole idea of it being the first. So I don't recall exactly the language that we were proposing, but, well, here it is. The world's first known surfboard shop has been called into question. Again, Gary McCauley has provided an email, not calling people out of turn because they did submit publicly accessible emails. Gary McCauley provided a lot of information that actually Mr. Velsi may have been in the Army in 1950, and was discharged later after the date, that there was no business license that we could find for that. Kristen Long Drew as well provided substantial information that called into question. So that calls into question the language, then, that regarding the world's first known surfboard shop. So with that information, I think we should take that into consideration as we approach this. We can put this off, obviously, there's no time constraint necessarily. I don't know about the plaque and the deadline for that. Hopefully, that wasn't done until we approve this. But we need to clear this up.
Nice, Ted. Councilor Lesser?
So I know there'll be need for public comment, and I see our Parks and Rec director is standing, but my own thought would be, it might be appropriate to refer it back to the Parks and Rec Commission to evaluate, excuse me, the Cultural Arts Commission, to evaluate some of the contentious history of this, with the understanding, at least my understanding, that this plaque is intended to be unveiled in connection with the Catalina paddleboard competition in August, and it'll take some time to fabricate it. So there is some time sensitivity if we're going to try and get it dedicated this year. So perhaps if I could, I would just ask Director Lehman, what would be the timing to get this back before the Cultural Arts Commission to evaluate some of these claims, and perhaps come up with language that might be respectful of what the history is that we know of, that we have a little bit more facts to support?
So good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. To expedite this, we could bring it to the May 15th commission meeting. Again, I know if we can check back with the South Bay Board Riders to find out what that turnaround time is. The plaque has not been ordered. They're, you know, waiting final directions, so we could come back with a closer look at all of the facts and potentially some additional proposed language. So that would, I think, the most ambitious timeline would be June 6th or June 20th. That'd be an extremely ambitious timeline, but it's feasible. Again, I know with the timeline coming, approaching quickly at the end of August, we would try to expedite it.
So the alternative, though, would just be to bring it back to council rather than the commission?
And that, that might be.
Councilor Hoerth.
Um, I, did you want to add, I mean, what you were saying, I don't know if everybody heard that, instead of taking it to the Cultural Arts Commission, you could just come back here with sort of the facts checked, but it seems like, you know, it, I'd want to include, make sure that the South Bay Board Riders, is that the name of the organization? Sorry. You know, are part of it. I mean, I'm sure that everybody wants to get this right. I think that every, nobody wants this to be a problem, but definitely include folks so that when it does come back here, both parties agree, or all parties agree, or whatever.
I think the information that's been shared with us should be shared broadly with the board riders.
Thank you.
With Jackie, of course, and others, so they understand where this is coming from, and hopefully, they can craft something together without the need for the commission, and agree to that, and propose that to council.
I agree. That's direction.
Before anybody gets voting, we'll take public comment. Any other questions for Director Lehman? Seeing none. I'm open up for public comments now. Anyone care to talk on this item while you're here?
Good evening, Mayor Montgomery and council. Yes, we've been through all of these details many times. I'm talking to a large number of gentlemen who began surfing there in the 40s, and we've, in this, during this process, we've lost four of our members from 95, 85 to 95. We lost Don Gilde last month. So all of these details, and in this letter at least, is the only one that I've seen. And I got this, the message today, I was administering an AP test at Maricosta, and I couldn't do anything to address any of the, any of the questions. But we've been through all of this, and we know the answers, and this is not, this is not correct history. We can prove it because the people who are there can testify to it. And I submitted these before, but I've printed out 15 of the letters from the original surfers from the pier in the 1950, 1948 to 50. So if you'd like this again, this copy? Okay. So I'm sorry that it's being delayed again. We're losing members. You know, they're not young, and we ought to see it through. I'd like, I'd like especially Mr. Copeland, who's been with me for 11 years on this issue, on this project, to see it through, and it's very important to those gentlemen. So if you have any questions, I'd be very, very happy to answer. I mean, I could address all of these issues in this letter.
Councilor Napolitano?
I'll wait until all public comment.
All right. Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you, Richard.
Any other speakers here in the studio, in the studio, in the council chambers? Seeing none. Anyone on Zoom, Martha? All right, we'll close public comment, council.
So just because I push my, I mean, I get it. I hate delaying things, too, but I did not see the detail of Mr. McCauley's, McCauley's letter, email that we all received today, you know? So I don't know if all those questions have been answered or not. And if they are, then great, but I'd like to see the answers next to the questions so that we can, say, verify something. Memories, you know, are one thing, but if there is no, I mean, we should be able to do the search of our business licenses and know whether or not one was pulled. Mr. McCauley says there wasn't one in 1950. It didn't come until later. So we should be able to see that. There was a suggestion that he was doing things, it was more of a workshop than a board shop. There's enough there, and if the, if the, the goal is to have the plaque out there for the Catalina Classic, which isn't until August, you know, I understand, we don't want to lose anymore, we want to keep folks in, but if it's, the unveiling of it is not till August, anyway, we have time to work through this issue. I think it should be brought back to council, though, directly, so that we don't have that additional time of delay with the commission. And I would think some of these issues, staff can look them up. The others, share with Jackie and both groups, and share the answers from both sides so that they can either be verified or question mark. You know, there's going to be some information that's known, some that's not known, and we just need to figure out what it is, because we've got different stories on all sides. And I want to, you know, like I said, I'm all for friendly rivalry. If there's enough ambiguity, I'll take it. Right now, and that's what it was before, but right now, there's less ambiguity from what I've been given, and I haven't seen that answered yet. So that's why I would say, let's take this check right now.
Got it. Anyone else have comments on council? Joe?
Yep.
I'll just add that I think the timing's important, but the facts are more so. We need to get it right the first time. I don't have to be sitting here watching us remake plaques right and left.
We've gone through that.
So whether it's item, that we continue this item and bring it back with direction to staff?
Yes, our goal is to come back at the next council meeting with the facts.
Okay.
Continue the item to the next council meeting.
And working with the group.
Yes.
Yes. Direction as noted.[1495.42][1495.42](APPLAUSE) All right.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next item, public hearing. Item J, seeing none. We move to item K, general business. Those who wonder what this is all about, every year, or every other year, we have boards and commissions appointments.
It was fun, yeah.
Yes. And always the most fun part of the evening here, because we have so many people that apply and not in opposition, and we appreciate everyone that applies. It's not easy, and many of these people we know, and have known for years. It's hard to tell your friends to know, but sometimes people that you want to get on there aren't always appointed. You tell them, always apply the next year. Always have vacancies every other year or two, and it happens. So this is going to be led tonight by our city colleague, Tamara, and Patty's going to walk us through the process, so you at home, that are scoring it at home, can watch it the same way we do. Patty, the floor is yours.
If I could just do a quick intro?
Yes.
I just want to thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, Lisa Tamara, City Clerk. This is part two of the annual boards and commissioners interview and appointment process. The interviews took place on April 25th, and tonight, Patty, our deputy city clerk, was going to walk you through the appointment process.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. As Lisa mentioned, we recently held our boards and commissioners interviews. Thirty-eight applicants were interviewed, and tonight, you will be filling 20 vacancies. If there are no questions from council before we begin the appointment process, we should open the floor to public comment.
Counsel, I think you've all been through this at least five times, except for Councilor Franklin's only gone through twice, so no one here is rookies, but I want to make sure no questions on a process and sheets. And seeing none, if you're wondering how we're going to start, we're doing planning commission first with seat number five, member at large, and council members can nominate one person or none. You don't have to vote, note anybody you want to. You can either point one, nominate one, I should say, or none. That's the process, and it continues from there. So we'll start with planning commission, seat number five, member at large. The seat is currently vacant and was held by?
Mr. Mayor, sorry. Did you want to open up to public comment?
Prior to?
Yes, to doing the.
Sure, why not? Let's make it more fun. Public comment before we start. Anyone here talk about the process? Any questions how it works? Seeing no questions here? All right. Anyone on Zoom? All right, none there. We'll close public comment. Now, we'll start at planning commission, seat number five, member at large. The seat is currently held, but will be vacant by Jerry Morton. He is termed out, which means he cannot run for the seat again.
Do I have the wrong? My top page is Joseph Ngoko, seat number three.
That's mine, too. Seat number three is hers.
You have a different one? Patty brought up new sheets, and with corrections on it?
Are there different, are they different?
Just the top three, just planning commission.
It's now five.
Okay.
Five, four, three.
Okay, five, four.
Patty, if you could explain.
Rip out your old sheet, throw it away.
No.
Oh, boy. All right. I remarked on the sheet. No, but okay. We'll give it a catch-up.
But still, everything else is the same. It's just the order of where it's stapled.
That's right. Yeah, they're the same.
I believe you.
Everybody on the same page? You on it? You're good?
I'm good.
That's all right with you, you're good? Councilor Lesser, you're good?
I am.
All right, folks, start off. Hey, Pretend Franklin, you're our first nominee tonight, our first speaker.
Okay, for seat number five, planning commission, Andrew Hoover.
Rachel Crossman.
Councilmember Hoerth?
Yes. Alan Kirshenbaum.
Kathleen Peralas.
Thank you. Councilmember Napolitano?
No further.
Moving along, Mayor Montgomery?
Rachel Crossman. If I mispronounce it, my apologies. And Kathleen Peralas.
Uh, Crestman and Alan Kirshenbaum.
Councilmember lesser?
Kathleen Peralas and Alan Kirchenbaum.
Rachel Kressman.
Rachel Kressman.
No further, no second. All right, Commissioner Franklin?
Andrew Hoover and Rachel Kressman.
Lisa, moving forward is Rachel Kressman, Kathleen Peralas, and Alan Kirchenbaum.
Rachel Kressman?
Should I just speak as opposed to waiting for my name to be called?
Yes, sure, sorry. Thank you.
Kathleen Peralas.
Counselor member Polatano?
Rachel Kressman?
Rachel Kressman?
You have three right there. You can make it unanimous, council.
Make it unanimous. So moved.
Welcome, Rachel, to the seat number five, planning commission seat.
Next, we have planning commission, seat number four, member at large. The seat is currently held by Robert Tokashiki. He is seeking reappointment. We'll begin with Mayor Montgomery.
Thanks for making that an easy one. Richard Ackerman?
Robert Tokashiki.
Counselor Polatano?
Yeah, Mr. Tokashiki's done a good job. I am for reappointment.
And I'll be the third vote for Robert as well?
Yeah.
Okay, let's make that unanimous.
Seat number four.
Yes.
Okay, Robert Tokashiki is reappointed. Next, we have planning commission, seat number three, member at large. That seat is currently held by Joseph Ungoko. He is seeking reappointment.
And I'll nominate Joseph Ungoko. I think it's good to have him continue on with his experience. And he's also on the downtown or outdoor dining commission. So I'd like to see that continue.
Counselor member Lesser?
I have tremendous support and appreciation for Commissioner Ungoko, but I will also nominate here Kathleen Peralas.
I'm going to stay with Joseph Ungoko. He is the longest-serving member now. He's got the institutional knowledge. He is on the downtown task force and he's very involved in what he does. So I support reappointment.
Counselor member Franklin?
Joseph Ungoko, I like his first name. No. He's very, he's done a great job. He took the, you know, he took the chairmanship reign and I've watched several of the meetings and so, very pleased.
The three votes are there. We can make it unanimous.
I'd like to make it unanimous, please.
Okay, Joseph Ungoko is reappointed. Next, we have Parking and Public Improvements Commission, seat number one, member at large. The seat is currently held by Alan Kirchenbaum. He is seeking reappointment. We'll begin with Counselor member Polatano.
Again, he's served well, so I am for the reappointment of Mr. Kirchenbaum.
I'll be the second vote for Mr. Kirchenbaum. Same reasons.
Mayor Montgomery?
No further.
Same.
Okay.
And I would vote for Alan Kirchenbaum and propose that we make it unanimous.
Agreed.
All righty, Alan Kirchenbaum is reappointed. Next, we have Parking and Public Improvements Commission, seat number two, the business community seat. This seat is currently held by George Apostel. He is not seeking reappointment. We'll begin with Counselor member Lesser.
Kit Becker.
I think one of the best interviews we had was Kit Becker's. Let's stick with her.
Kit Becker, I've known her for a long, long time and I'm just proud of her for taking over the business and doing a great job, so.
Well, she brings back the smiley face cookie.
Well...
We did get bread with cookies, just kidding. We did not.
No further, but we have three votes. We'll make it unanimous.
Okay. Kit Becker is appointed to seat number two. Next, we have the Parking and Public Improvements Commission, seat number three, member at large. The seat is currently held by Kathleen Peralas. She is termed out. We'll begin with Counselor member Hoover.
Yeah, and I want to begin by thanking Kathleen Peralas for her service on both the Parking and Public Improvements Commission and several times on the planning commission. She's an incredible public servant and volunteer. And I'm happy to nominate Joe Marcy, who is very excited to do this. So, if you're excited, that's cool.
Counselor member Lesser?
Counselor mayor Hoover, had you not nominated Joe Marcy, I would have, but I will nominate Cyrus Adami.
No further.
Okay.
Joe Marcy.
Mayor Montgomery?
Joe Marcy as well. We can make it unanimous.
I'd so move.
Okay. Joe Marcy is appointed to PPIC, seat number three. Next, we have the Parks and Recreation Commission, seat number two, which is the Manhattan Beach Unified School District nominee. That seat is currently held by Bruce Greenberg. He is termed out. And on the April 19th, Manhattan Beach Unified School District Board of Trustees, at their meeting of April 19th, they unanimously voted to appoint Karen Komatschinsky as their nominee. A motion needs to be made to ratify the appointment made by the MBUSD Board members.
Oh, I guess so.
I see a motion by...
I pressed my button.
Counselor... Thank you.
I don't see it for...
Motion by Counselor Hoover, second by Counselor Lesser?
Yes, I wholeheartedly move to approve the appointment made by the MBUSD Board members.
Either voice vote or a call vote?
Karen Komatschinsky.
The motion.
Okay.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right.
Next, we have Parks and Recreation Commission, seat number three, which is the member at large seat. It's currently held by Ken Weiner and he is termed out. We'll begin with Mayor Montgomery.
Oh, man. Joe Marcy. No, that's it, I pick on this one first. I'm going to go with Larry Zimblist.
And I'm going to go with Roberta Schreiner.
No further nominees.
Counselor member Polatano?
Kathleen Peralas.
Oh.
Counselor member Franklin?
Larry Zimblist.
Counselor member Hoover?
Can I have three? Okay. Um, oh gosh, turn it. Larry Zimblist and Ro Schreiner.
Counselor member Lesser?
Ro Schiner and Larry Zimblis.
Counselor member Polatano?
Kathleen Peralas and Ro Schreiner.
Larry Zimblist and Ro Schreiner, yeah, Ro Schreiner, yeah.
Mayor Montgomery?
Larry Zimblis and Kathleen Peralas.
Okay, all three move forward. Larry Zimblis, Ro Schreiner, and Kathleen Peralas. Counselor member Lesser?
Larry Zimblis.
Counselor member Polatano?
Ro Schreiner.
Counselor member Franklin?
Larry Zimblis.
Mayor Montgomery?
My original nominee, Larry Zimblis.
And Counselor member Hoover?
Ro, you know I love you, but with three votes, I'm prepared to...
I love you, but...
What's that?
I love you, but...
I love you, but, sorry. No, there's three votes. I would move to include mine and encourage it to be unanimous.
I agree.
Okay.
All good.
Larry Zimblis is appointed to Parks and Rec, seat number three. Next, we have the Parks and Rec Commission, seat number seven, which is a student seat. It's currently held by Reese Sirota and he will be termed out. We'll begin with Counselor member Franklin.
So, I just want to say, the joy of doing this is hearing the student interviews. These are the best and the brightest and anybody that's willing to, I mean, they're so, they have so much on their plate and they're willing to do this and some great ideas. So, all of you, if you don't get selected, keep, well, keep trying based upon your grade level. But thank you all so much and keep up the good work. And is there an age limit for the regular, to be a regular commission member?
Eighteen and a registered voter.
Eighteen and a registered voter?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So anyway, just wanted to say that and I'm sure my colleagues agree with me. Daniel Greenberg?
Luca Scher.
Counselor member Hoover?
Daniel Greenberg.
Luca Scher.
No further.
Okay, moving on, Mayor Montgomery?
Wow. Luca Scher.
I'm going to take advantage here and say Greenberg and Luca.
Wow.
I know, it's a, they're so wonderful, both of them.
Counselor member Lesser?
Both of them are really very impressive students. They have a passion for the subject matter and have really dealt deep in the subject matter. This is really difficult. I'm also going to say Luca Scher and Daniel Greenberg.
Oh, boy. My house is going to get egged.
Not the price of eggs or nothing.
But, you know, there was something that Daniel put in there about commitment to senior programming, you know, in Parks and Recreation. I really liked that, the cross-generational. And also, the park photo contests, you know, have photo contests of just, of all of our parks, which is, I think, can probably bring out some great detail that maybe some of us miss, just walking through. So, I'm going to go Daniel Greenberg.
I'd be concerned there for a second, okay.
So, both of them do move forward. So, starting with Counselor member Hoover.
All right, I'll do Greenberg, because I appreciate you bringing up the specifics.
Counselor member Lesser?
Luca.
Daniel Greenberg.
What's the three, right?
Scher.
I will join.
Three?
Three votes for Daniel Greenberg, so...
Make it unanimous.
Daniel Greenberg is appointed to Parks and Rec, seat number seven. Next, we have Library Commission, seat number four, member at large. The seat is currently held by Roberta Schreiner and she is termed out. Beginning with Counselor member Polatano.
Elizabeth Rubino.
Counselor member Franklin?
Deena Dahl.
Mayor Montgomery?
No further.
Counselor member Hoover?
Deena Dahl.
Counselor member Lesser?
I'm going to nominate Shannon Boyle, who has an impressive background with marketing, a love of books, and I think would add a great deal of experience to the commission and its purpose.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin?
Betsy Rubino and Deena Dahl.
Mayor Montgomery?
Deena Dahl.
Counselor member Hoover?
Deena Dahl.
Counselor member Lesser?
Shannon Boyle and Betsy Rubino.
Boyle and Rubino.
Okay, all three move forward. Mayor Montgomery?
Deena Dahl.
Counselor member Hoover?
Sorry, Deena Dahl.
Counselor member Lesser?
Shannon Boyle.
Counselor member Polatano?
Shannon Boyle.
And Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
It's a, what is that, a, something about riches? I mean, it's just such a great, they're such great people. And I would say, Deena Dahl.
Move to make it unanimous.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay, Deena Dahl is appointed to seat number four on the Library Commission. Next, we have Library Commission, seat number six, which is a student seat, currently held by Emma Darrow. She is termed out. We'll begin with Counselor member Lesser.
Catherine Jester. Very impressed by your presentation.
No further.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin?
Yeah, no further.
Mayor Montgomery?
No further.
Counselor member Hoover?
Well, I want to give a shout out to Charlie Farber. I thought he did a wonderful job, as did also students. I mean, everyone's mentioned it, but really, you guys were in good hands. So, I will happily make it unanimous for Catherine Jester.
Okay. Catherine Jester is appointed to seat number six on the Library Commission. Next, we have Cultural Arts Commission, seat number one, which is the Art Experience seat, currently held by Joe Marcy. He is eligible for reappointment.
However...
We just...
We just appointed.
Apologies, yes, thank you. So, yes, he's not considered in this list.
I go first here? Okay, Jen Donner.
And I'd like to nominate Carol Patterson, who spent a lifetime in the arts and was also a public servant on a council in Ohio and helped create their arts commission. Pleased she's here.
Carol Patterson. No further.
Okay, Counselor member Lesser?
Jen Donner and Carol Patterson.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin?
Tiffany Barbara and Carol Patterson.
Mayor Montgomery?
Carol Patterson and Tiffany Barbara.
Jen Donner and Carol Patterson.
That was Donner and Patterson? Sorry, Counselor member Hoover, was that Donner and Patterson? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Yeah, did I, sorry.
Oh, no, I just, I wanted to clarify.
Yes, that's what I said.
Okay, so all three move forward, beginning with Counselor member Polatano.
Patterson.
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 Why don't we make it unanimous?
Patterson is appointed to seat number one, Art Experience. Next, we have Cultural Arts Commission, seat number five, member at large. That seat is currently held by Elizabeth Rubino. She is termed out. And we'll begin with Mayor Montgomery.
Oh, don't you love this one?
Jen Donner.
No further nominations. Jen Donner, that's what I'll say. So I will make a nomination.
Right, you said...
Jen Donner.
Okay.
Counselor member Polatano?
And I should say why. I mean, she's an actual artist and she's quite accomplished in business as well. I think she would bring a great deal to the body. Thank you.
Young at art, the whole thing.
Young at art, the whole thing.
No further.
Tiffany Barbara?
Okay, Counselor member Hoover?
Jen Donner. That's it?
Jen Donner.
Counselor member Polatano?
Where are we, round one?
Round one.
Round one, yeah.
Barbara and Donner.
Barbara and Erica Exberger.
Erica and Tiffany Barbara.
All three move forward, beginning with Counselor member Lesser.
Jen Donner.
Counselor member Polatano?
Donner.
Move to make it unanimous.
Okay, agreed.
For Jen Donner.
Jen Donner is appointed to seat number five on the Cultural Arts Commission. Next, we have Cultural Arts Commission, seat number six, student seat, currently held by Ria Atom. She is termed out. We'll begin with Mayor Pro Tem Franklin.
Samantha Ehrlich Fine?
Chloe Kim. Chloe Kim.
Councilmember Horwath?
Anthony Padnos. Let's give them all.
Well, I will. I will nominate Luca Scher.
All right. No further.
Mayor Montgomery?
I'll deserve it.
Chloe Kim and Anthony Padnos.
Anthony Padnos and Chloe Kim.
And I will move for, excuse me, just a second. Luca Scher and Samantha. Ehrlich Fine.
Samantha.
Samantha.
Okay, so, moving forward is Chloe Kim, Anthony Padnos, and Samantha Ehrlich Fine.
Oh, boy. Well, golly. I mean, three of you, I'll go with Samantha Ehrlich Fine, since three of you mentioned this person, this applicant.
Councilmember Lesser?
Samantha Ehrlich Fine.
Samantha.
Samantha.
Chloe Kim, all the way to the end there. You read her by, look at what she's done, you go, wow.
Wow, so hard.
Incredible.
I was impressed with her last year.
Anthony Padnos has...
Move to make it unanimous.
I like his socks. He designed socks.
Socks, doodle art, like, these kids are, oh, so great.
Make it unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, we should order another seat for students.
I like that idea.
All right, so Samantha is appointed to Seat Number Six.
Next year, Mayor Franklin will order an extra seat for students.
So, with the next section, we have the Board of Building Appeals, and so there's five Board of Building Appeals seats. There's currently five applicants, three of which are incumbents, and two others who have expressed interest. The membership to this board's a little bit different compared to our other commissions, in that if there's an insufficient number of applicants, the City Council may appoint qualified members of other boards or commissions to serve concurrently on this board. And so, if there's no objections, each of the five applicants will be appointed to a seat, with the three incumbents, Mike Kling, Thomas Freitag, and Jim Yang, maintaining their seat numbers, and alphabetically appointing Cyrus Adami to Seat Number Two, and Robert Tokashiki to Seat Number Three. Or, if council prefers, we can go through the appointment process.
But Roberts aren't available, right?
On this, for this board, you can, you can serve concurrently on a commission, yeah.
You in a motion for us?
It's just part of the appointment process, so if there's no objections, we'll consider them appointed, yeah.
Objections?
I would say there's no objection, but this group, this board, of folks that we have serving on this, is vastly underutilized. They have incredible experience, and we should put them to work on some things. I would make them oversight project managers on some of the things that we do. The engineering experience, the building experience, everything. They have a wealth of information. We're wasting it with appointments to this board, which we almost never meet, so I would strongly suggest we find a role for these folks.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
I need to push my button.
There you go. Councilmember Lesser?
When we get to future council business, I'll make a motion to that effect.
But to take a transparency, I met Mr. Yang while we were both aroused at the same time. He's wearing his Metro Engineering shirt, told me his old history. I know Bruce and probably Eric probably know the history, the wealth of knowledge this guy has in his brain, says he volunteers to help engineering now, and I go, that's the guy I want. I agree with Councilmember Tom. That guy's willing to come work for us for free and help us do things with this, and he's obviously well-qualified. I say yes to all of that.
Yeah.
So, with that said, I think we're all in agreement with you. Let's reappoint all five. No conflict in the boards. We're good.
Okay.
And take advantage of their volunteer attitude.
I also just want to say, I really appreciate when Jim Freitag spoke, and he said, listen, I know that we haven't been called on, but I want to be here if you need me.
That's right there in the front row.
Where? I can't see you.
There he is.
Oh, you know, you're really behind. You're behind. But I so appreciate, it just came shining through, and I was like, yeah, that's the kind of person, yeah. So, thank you for your comments.
Absolutely.
I didn't realize you were here.
Absolutely. Our last appointment tonight?
Yes, we are on to the last one, and so this is the LA County West Vector Control Board Member-at-Large seat. This seat is currently held by Jake Dupree, and Mr. Dupree previously submitted a letter of resignation, and the council declared his seat vacant beginning July 1st, 2023. The person appointed to this seat will complete the remainder of Jake Dupree's term, which ends on December 31st, 2024, and then the appointee would then need to reapply if they would like to be reappointed.
Thank you. Just for a little information, people that know what this board is, it's a county board. It's not our board. We appoint one person to this board, and they provide direction to the county with their people. So, it's an intense field, and especially highly specialized, what they do. From that, we'll follow your lead on the appointment.
Okay, we'll begin with Councilmember Napolitano.
I'm going to nominate a person who has a certificate in vector control, and that's Wayne Powell.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin?
Wayne Powell?
Mayor Montgomery?
Nominate an engineer profession, who worked for the county, who worked with all of the cities, and teaches USC, Dr. Cyrus Adami.
I respect both gentlemen, of course, but I'm gonna follow with Wayne Powell.
I respect both gentlemen's, but I served with former Mayor Powell, and I will be nominating Wayne Powell as well.
So, that's four votes for Wayne Powell. So, he is appointed to the LA County West Vector Control Board.
Got it.
And that concludes the appointment process.
All right.
Painful than most times.
This was so hard. Really hard.
It didn't hurt as much.
Yeah, we're gonna break, folks, for another five minutes. We'll come right back.
It's horribly hard, but congratulations, and thank you to all who applied.
All right, everybody. We can begin our meeting and start with item 12, Presentation to Proposed Five-Year CIP Program, CIP, led by our very own...
Wait.
So moved. Let's start it off with the Public Works Director, Eric Lee.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. On behalf of the Public Works Department, it is our pleasure to present the five-year CIP update to the council and the community. Before I turn it over to our city engineer, Katie Dougherty, I just wanted to thank her for all the tremendous work that she and her staff have done to get us this far. I also want to recognize Director Shirelian and the finance team for their partnership in this endeavor. It's definitely a team effort here at the city, and we're just very, very excited to present this to you tonight. And without further ado, I'll turn it over to Katie. Thank you.
All right.
That snack was caught, my friend.
I can do it.
Or your nephew.
Good evening, Mayor Montgomery.
Greetings.
Council members. Katie Dougherty, I'm the city engineer. I will go ahead and dive in. First, start with a quick little timeline. This proposed CIP was presented to the planning commission and PPIC last week. We're here tonight to present it to you for the first time, totaling 84 projects and $160 million over five years. And this will be brought back on June 6th for final adoption and incorporating any comments that we receive today. I did want to start off the presentation by highlighting a few accomplishments this year and anticipated to be completed by the end of this fiscal year, which is June 30th. I want just to, I won't read this whole list, but just to highlight a few. The photo there is from our ribbon cutting in March for the Sepulveda Bridge widening project. We also did some beautiful landscape restoration at Sand Dune Park, and that was done by our field operations division. And we completed the automated water meter installations that was mentioned previously this evening entirely in-house in our utilities division. They replaced over 13,000 water meters and saved the city about $1.8 million. So as you're all aware, this is a five-year CIP that's updated on an annual basis. The changes that are highlighted in the council report, all the changes are in red. And just so you're aware, anything that has a blue highlight, that means that it's at least partially grant-funded or outside-funded. But the changes are based on changes in priority, funding availability, and updated information. This year, we're focusing on the city's security network upgrades to park and recreational facilities, stormwater quality compliance, and maximizing utilization of the city's groundwater supply. So in a snapshot, we have about $49 million in previously appropriated, already approved funds. We are requesting an appropriation of about $49 million for this coming fiscal year, starting on July 1st. And then the remainder, $61.9 million is for the out-years, years two through five, for a total of, as I said, 84 projects and $160 million. Just to go over the types of funding sources that we use in the CIP, the first are CIP funds that come from TOT, parking citations, grants. We have a construction bond for our Fire Station Two project, and that's about $20.8 million. We have enterprise funds, which are fees, user fees. These are, that's about $90.7 million, or $8 million. And then we have a lot of grants, special funds, local returns, and that's about $48.8 million in this year's budget. So I'm going to run through eight different categories of projects. I will focus my presentation on the new ones, which are the ones in red, but I am happy to answer any questions about any of the 84 projects. Yes?
Can you make this type smaller, because I can still read it just a little bit?
Did you get the larger print? I did bring larger.
I magnified glass.
Were you said this? Okay.
Steve, you don't want to magnify? Literally, Brian.
I'll take, I'll take. I'm scared of that. I might mute those.
Kind of dirty, though. Sorry.
Okay.
What's going on with this thing?
Without further ado, I will continue. The first category of projects I'm going to talk about are CIP projects. These are generally buildings and park projects, landscape signage, projects that don't typically fit into the other categories of funding availability. There are 30 projects represented here across three funds. This is about $20.8 million. So the next slide is a complete list of all 30 projects. But again, I'll focus just on the new ones this year. We're proposing electric vehicle chargers at Marine Avenue Park, new flooring in the police facility here across the way, deferred park maintenance. This is funding that was actually previously approved, but we were previously tracking it as part of our operating budget, but it's, we feel it's more appropriate to track it here in the CIP, so that's what that is. Marine Avenue Park aesthetic field turf replacement. We would like to do some renovations to the restroom at Heights. Gateway and monument sign replacement. These are, will replace the gateway signs at the main entrances to the city and monument signs at the parks and other recreational facilities. Renovations to the employee lounge here in City Hall. Phase two of our wayfinding program. Phase one is underway and currently funded. This is the feasibility study for the Aquatic Center. Miroposa Fitness Station, park course equipment replacement. This is the facility that's right across from Bonds, and this would include the associated ADA improvements. And then a feasibility study to do some renovations or improvements here in council chambers.
Like what?
Like what? Sky's the limit. We will study the feasibility of that, if approved. Okay, so I will move on to the next category. This is our streets, sidewalks, and right-of-way funds. This covers 19 projects at $43.6 million. This includes annual programs for slurry seal and street resurfacing, also intersection improvements, ADA improvements, and sidewalks. So focusing on the new projects proposed here, this is pavement rehabilitation on Manhattan Beach Boulevard between Sepulveda and Dianthus. This is sort of a downhill and gets a lot of wear and tear, so we're proposing to rehab that portion of it. Intersection improvements at Manhattan Beach Boulevard in Pacific. A complete streets corridor study for Manhattan Beach Boulevard. Annual, this is a new program for annual citywide traffic signal replacements. This is, as I said, a new program. We've identified about 18 locations in the city intersections with non-compliant traffic signal poles. We try to incorporate those in existing projects when we can, but these 18 locations don't have a project associated, so this would start allowing us to switch those out. Improvements at Manhattan Beach Boulevard and PEC. This is actually under construction. This is new funding for that, associated with the construction of that project that's currently underway. And then improvements to the crosswalks near the Johnson Center. Okay, next fund is the parking fund. There are two projects for $2.4, $2.5 million. We're proposing one new project here, which is the feasibility and design of full demolition and replacement of parking structure Lot 3, which is just across from Metlocks at Morningside and 12th.
I have a question.
Yes.
With regard to the scope of what that design might look like, or what the alternative designs will, could be, will there be a dedicated council meeting to that, or is this fora in the budget discussions to come, the opportunity to get into that a little bit?
No, yes, we will definitely be coming back with options at a later date. What's proposed here is to do feasibility next fiscal year, so we would do a full comprehensive analysis of what it could be, have these discussions with you, have discussions with the community. And then the following year after that, once we've decided on the option to move forward with, we would dive into detailed design.
And in terms of putting aside sufficient revenue for what might be the scope of work, given that it still is not defined, obviously, that's one of the reasons for engaging an outside firm, to what extent should we be discussing in this process, ensuring that there's sufficient funds to even do what might be proposed?
I think we could have preliminary discussions on that with the help from, from the director of finance, if you'd like.
Great.
Okay.
Hold on one second.
Yeah.
Thank you for putting the button, pushing the button.
And I apologize, Mr. Mayor, I realize I didn't push the button.
Newbie.
I was just patiently waiting.
For once.
So, well, I go back to, you know, the, hold on. Electric vehicle chargers at Marine Avenue Park. Why there, I would say, because I get that it's money being provided by, what is it, QMD. But, you know, in these situations, for the park folks that attend there, it's usually one or two hours max that they're going to stay there. So we're really installing them for the neighbors to park there and walk across to their homes, like they do here at City Hall, when they park down below and some other users we know. But, but, but I, and are these going to be charge stations that charge? Because we're talking about that, and changing our charging stations over to things that actually require a fee be paid for the electricity.
So the reason that we're centering on Marine Avenue Park is really just the availability of city facilities on the east side of town. We already have two chargers at the Art Center. We originally looked at Marine Avenue Sports Complex, and that was determined to not be feasible from a cost perspective between us and Edison. We're exploring right now, and we actually are working on designs with Edison, our four chargers at Marine Avenue Park. They would be, once the city council reviews and approves the fees that we're going to be proposing for charging, these certainly would fall under that umbrella. And really, I think the purpose of the project would be to provide chargers at city's facilities on the east side of town.
I get it, but I mean, I also see the folks who use these things as, you know, they sit there and they leave them overnight, for the most part. There's folks who come and go, but again, since our parks aren't meant to be used at past 10 o'clock, let's say, there's still going to be someone using that unless we charge for them. But even then, so I just, I mean, we're getting the money, and we're putting them up all over the place, but I'm not sure this is the high demand.
Well, I think that, you know, your observation is correct based on our current experience, but right now, we're not charging, and so there's really, there's no cost for somebody to be occupying that spot, charging for more than four hours, especially if they, if it's subject to enforcement, you know, they might gamble about enforcement. But once they're paying per kilowatt hour, I assume they're going to be more self-pleasing.
Okay. All right. I'll leave it for now.
Mayor Pro Tim Franklin. Yes. So Director Lee, I had the same questions and issues about Marine Avenue Park. It's, it's used so much, and it's very difficult to get parking there. There's the soccer field, there's the baseball field, and plus all the other activities, and then we're going to, now we're going to repurpose the pay-and-play, you know, facility, and then there's the basketball courts. So the idea of, even if, even if you're charging, if we're charging for charging, you know, the idea that a car is going to be there, you know, for a length of time. I thought there was only like a couple, but there's four of them?
We're planning for four.
Okay.
So I think the council's concerns about, you know, people excessively using a specific spot and taking it up for legitimate patrons that might want to use the park, I think we could address that in the fee-setting process, and potentially those locations where we actually want to encourage high turnover, we establish limits, or we, maybe the rates are higher to discourage people from going too long. I think there's ways for the council to address this once we have some infrastructure at that location, or as we get closer to installing it.
Has there been, been any industry study that shows, like, the utilization of, I mean, I see it too, when I'm trying to find a parking spot, and then it's, oh, it's only for electric. And I'm sorry, I have a gas-powered car. But, but, I mean, that means that a certain number of people can't use that spot, right?
So I'm confident those studies exist. I would assume that there's going to be some principle in the background that if you don't charge or anything, people will stay for as long as they want, and you might even be inviting out-of-towners to come to only use your charging and stay there as long as they want and then leave, and they're not, it's not a true local community benefit. I don't have those studies, but I would assume that exists. And so I think, you know, it comes down to if electric vehicle charging infrastructure is a priority for the city and where we want to deploy it, and that I think we establish guidelines and regulations from there.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Lesser, then Apolatano, then Homworth, then Meath, will that, Captain, resume her, resume her speech or comments. Not yet.
So very quickly, Director Lee, just to confirm what you said in passing, the city could impose time limits on these spaces, correct?
Correct.
And furthermore, I thought the city was in process with developing a policy related to electronic vehicle charging locations, correct?
The fees for that charging?
The fees, but I thought it might also get into some of the policy discussion about, perhaps there being a time limit precisely for some of the reasons addressed by my colleagues, which has to do with that, to the extent there's already a shortage of spaces, and there are electric car spaces that aren't being utilized, or are being taken up by vehicles that are just charging for many hours at a time, perhaps there could be time limits that would encourage turnover of those spaces.
Correct.
And is the vehicle for, excuse the pun, for dealing with that, perhaps in the policy that we're promulgating, right?
Exactly.
And then lastly, I thought there were going to be mandates with regard to transitions over to electric vehicles, so perhaps having electric charging stations at that parking lot in the future would be perhaps important for many who will have electric vehicles, many more than there are on the road today. Is that some of the rationale for putting those spaces over there?
I think in the background, I mean, those mandates that you're talking about are really at the federal and state level, and I think they're anticipating that private sector is going to lead the way on a lot of that. And there's no way that the city as a municipality can really provide all the infrastructure for no gas-powered vehicles in the next 20 years.
I'll stop there. Thank you.
Colonel Apolatano.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would, I appreciate the desire to save paper and help the environment, but if I could expand this line item so we can see it, so I can see the numbers with it, even the page of support, the type is tiny. I think it helps the public as well. But, you know, to Mayor Pro Tim Franklin's point about the charging stations, though, I mean, we're still, I don't know what the percentage here, Manhattan Beach, I appreciate that everyone is environmentally conscious, but overall, the sale of electric vehicles are still in the single digits. And frankly, I know this is heresy, but the primary source for charging should be their homes. And my opinion, that I would hate to see open parking spots at any time, just because there, have a charging station there. And frankly, anybody should be able to park there. In fact, it's a policy issue. But if it's open, it might have a charger, but there's no other spots available. I think anyone should be able to park there. But we'll get into that in the policy, I guess.
All right. Councilmember Homworth.
I mean, just a quick comment. I think that more and more people are, you know, moving towards electric, as more and more car dealers are saying, we're only going to be producing electric vehicles. And I, you know, it is, it is an incentive, not incentive. I don't necessarily want to provide the electricity for free. I'm all for charging and limits, absolutely for sure. But I also think, especially when the times are the busiest, and, you know, it's parents dropping out, you know, doing soccer and all the other stuff, that age group, if you will, bless their hearts, all those young parents out there, they're buying more and more electric cars, and it is important that we have a infrastructure to support that, so. But I appreciate the desire for the policies that limit or charge. I absolutely agree with that.
I appreciate being called a young parent.
You know, read into it what you will.
I'll wrap up here and let Catherine continue, but there's three things. We have Rabbit Park, I'm the one that's been pushing for the east side to get some love when it comes to chargers. They don't have near the west side amount of chargers that we have. Charging or not, I'm fine with charging. That's number one. I think we also could follow what both the Village Mall did, as well as others, that have done a charging ladder, that the longer you stay, the more you pay, right? As far as the timeframe goes, I agree. You want to close it off charging at 10 o'clock at night? Fine. Close it off 10 o'clock at night. I'm cool with that. That way, we stop the overnight chargers. But we can't discount the fact that there's plenty of places to park, and even when rushed over there in Marine Avenue Park, I go there, and I think, okay, you have some people that drive electric, they can park there and charge. Maybe it's two hours, maybe it's four hours. I don't clock them how long they're there for. But I agree that the east side needs more spaces, and we're driving towards both the feds, potential to the president, what he's saying. And then our governor says we need to get more electric vehicles on the road and give money through Edison and grants to make it happen. That money, we don't take advantage of it. We don't take that money, someone else will. We'll be stuck by not having it. So I think the west side, east side need to have somewhat appropriate or evened out, equal charging measures. I'm okay with charging. I'm also okay with the time clock that said at 10 o'clock, our chargers go silent, and that we're good. So past that point, Captain, floor back, thank you Director Lee. Captain, the floor is yours again. We'll try to hold our comments for the end.
Try.
No promises.
Either works for me. Okay, moving on to the state pier and lot fund. Two projects are proposed here, $2.2 million. The new one we're proposing here is to do a full comprehensive structural analysis update of the pier. The last one was done in 2012, so it needs to be updated. The next is our stormwater funds, and I did want to just mention here that the majority of the projects in this category come from outside mandates, federal, state laws for water quality compliance that require CIP projects to be constructed, but also O and M, in order to stay in compliance. And this, this fund is annually supported by the general fund, because there are not enough funds available. So there are nine projects proposed here and $37.5, $37.5 million. There are two new proposed projects. The first is the storm, excuse me, the PEC Avenue Storm Drain Improvements Project. This is a project out of our master plan that will divert flow away from our lift station at PEC and 23rd, so it alleviates some of the pressure on that pump station. And the second proposed project is upgrading the electrical equipment at the golf course lift station, the West Drift Golf Course Lift Station. The next is the streetlight and landscape fund. There's one project proposed here. This is an annual replacement fund that existed already, but we are proposing to increase the, the annual allowance for this. This is to replace, replace and repair streetlights the city purchased. and repair streetlights. The city purchased 825 of them, I believe in 2019. So this is to satisfy our responsibility with those. Next, I've got the wastewater fund. Eight projects here at 25, at 25 million. Let's see, these are for replacing sewer mains, upgrading lift stations, and improving our skater communication. One new project is, is proposed here, and that's to upgrade the lift station on Bill Avenue. And last, we have the water fund. Thirteen projects at 28 million. These are, again, to do main replacements, lift station upgrades. This also is where the funding for our Peck Reservoir Replacement Project and the projects that we're doing at Block 35 come from. And four new projects are proposed here. The second phase of the El Porto Water Infrastructure Improvements Project, this is, will improve water quality and fire flow to the El Porto area. Phase one was approved in last year's budget, but it was called the Rosecrans Avenue Pipeline. It was called something different. We changed it here just to be consistent amongst the phases. The well line replacement on Manhattan Beach Boulevard. The city owns two groundwater wells located in the city of Redondo Beach. The well lines up to our border are in good shape. However, the, our well line within the Redondo Beach side could use an upsize, and that would be to allow us to maximize our pumping from those groundwater wells. So we're proposing to replace the well line, our well line, but it's located in the city of Redondo Beach. Duncan, Duncan Drive and Sepulveda Fire Flow Improvements. This is a specific neighborhood that is in need of fire flow. The pipe, the whole loop needs to be upgraded, and a new hydrant needs to be installed. And the last proposed new project are improvements to the, to the elevated tank at Block 35. These are follow-on improvements, or follow-up needs resulting from our painting project a couple of years back. So just very quickly, here's an overall snap, snapshot or visual of where the funds are. The wastewater, stormwater, and water funds are on the left-hand side there. Those are our enterprise funds and the majority of where the funds come from for our five-year CIP. Our CIP funds are in orange, kind of at the bottom right, and then followed by street and, and street sidewalk and right-of-way projects in blue. So just for a visual on that. And here's a quick map of our active CIP projects. This is from our engineering division's website. So just another quick little visual and map. So I am here tonight to present you with a presentation on the proposed five-year CIP for fiscal years '23, '24 to '27, '28. The proposal is to review the list of proposed projects, provide comments to be incorporated when we come back in June, or approve the list as presented. And that concludes my presentation. Director Lee and I are here for whatever questions you may have.
Well done, Catherine. Stand by for the multiple questions I'm sure we're going to have.
I'm ready.
Counsel, who has questions? Catherine, pass the word EB chargers. Anyone? No questions on plans?
Hold on.
Push your button. Push your button. Counselor Holworth, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I had a question on, on page 10, when you talk about street sidewalks and right-of-way. And number 17, is it Jocelyn Center Crosswalks? Are they just repainting the ones that are there? Are they different or additional ones, different places?
The crosswalk locations themselves will be in the same place. We'll be doing improvements. The flashing beacons will be installing for, you know, better visuals for drivers. We're also proposing an ADA pathway across the woodchip path there for better access.
Oh, that's great. Thank you.
And it's, it's in front of Jocelyn, and also in front of, in front of Live Oak Park.
Good. Mayor Pro Tim Franklin?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. This is a suggestion. I don't expect you to have the number I'm going to ask for right away, but on slide three, where you talk about completed projects in fiscal year '22, '23, I think it might help residents, and quite frankly, me, if you could, go ahead and just, you know, there's 13 projects there that have been completed, or at least are going to be completed, right? Because some of them aren't, I mean, they're well underway, but they're not completed, like the polywog play structure and
Correct.
Things like that. But the total dollars of just those 13, you know, just so we can see, kind of gauge, like, how, how much have we been spending? And, because this is showing the benefit, but, you know, at what cost? So just to have a total dollar amount on that.
That's a great comment. I could probably guesstimate it, but I don't want to, I don't want to guess.
Okay. I mean, you're trying to get perspective here. Just bear with me here for a second. On slide eight, you talk about item number 17. Are we there? I'm sorry. Slide eight.
Page 272 of the staff report, of the entire report. Page 272, slide, page eight of the actual report.
Is someone changing that?
Oh, you, oh, yes. I absolutely can do that.
Okay.
Yeah, your slide.
Oops, too far. Sorry about that.
There you go. Great. So down at the bottom left, you see big field improvements. Now, one of the things I was really impressed about this is, and the people who live there, is that we made an arrangement with the contractor to store the dirt that was dug out from the Peck Reservoir onto the existing big field. Now, it took it out, but also because that would have cost them money to transport it, they gave us some money. So I believe it was $500,000 or something in that range. So could you just give a little bit of details there? And then also, because the soccer teams and everybody are anxious, when is that field going to be ready, restored?
Yeah, absolutely. So as part of the, the Peck Reservoir Project, the contractor has replaced the sod and will be installing new perimeter fencing. And this was in exchange for storing the dirt there on the field. Now, this, this Peck Field Improvements Project is separate from that. This is to replace the backstops. So after our Peck Reservoir Project is done, we're going to come back through, and the plan is to replace, is to do even more improvements at the field. And so the second part of your question was, when is it going to be ready? We're expecting, the improvements are in. We're waiting for some sod to establish, and those, it will be ready for use in the coming, say, month.
Okay. All right, great. Sorry for the confusion. So I just, because I knew
Not at all.
A lot of stuff was happening there, including a lot of kids having fun sliding down that big hill, which I don't think was the intention. So the, if you can go to page 10, and assuming too, that on these pages, the red items marked in red, I didn't see it actually written here, but the items in red are the ones that are in the plan that are
New.
That are new?
New, yes.
Okay.
They were not in last year's plan.
Okay. And then, so the other ones have been in there. So number 19, the dual-left-turn Manhattan Beach Boulevard at Sepulveda. So those were going to be from Sepulveda, left turn onto northbound to westbound, northbound Sepulveda to westbound Manhattan Beach Boulevard. You're going to change, you're going to add another one, right? There's one now.
The left-turn lanes, I think they're going the other, they're going the other way. It's southbound, left turn onto, onto, yes.
Oh, oh.
MBB.
Oh, that way?
Yeah. Southbound, left turn onto Manhattan Beach Boulevard.
So there's nothing northbound and going to westbound?
Not as proposed as this, not proposed as part of this project, I don't believe. We, I could certainly follow up with you on that. If I'm recalling the plans correctly, that's not included.
That's already last year, right?
Go ahead. Sorry. Yeah, yes, we can, yeah, we can, I can certainly follow up and clarify that.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Can you just clarify that? I thought I'd heard way back.
That it was going to be the other direction?
Both directions.
Yeah. Certainly, I'll follow up on that.
On page 15, the Street Light and Landscape Fund, which, by the way, great job, public works on doing all the 20 to 30 little islands of landscaping, you know, throughout downtown. It really makes a difference. Really looks good. And then I was down there late at night, and, not late at night, but, you know, for me. And I noticed that there was a lot of the trees were lit throughout the year. So that looks nice as well. So good for that. But my, my question on this is, the new technology, I presume on the streetlights is LED technology? And I'm just wondering if we're, well, first of all, to confirm that, and then, this is a little bit in the weeds, but are we getting the cost savings benefit of LED technology versus halogen and the like, or whatever they were before?
I believe that some, if not all, of these lights are LED. We'll definitely follow up on that. And we can get you compare and contrast for what our expenditures have been since we've converted. But I don't have that information today.
Okay. So, because it's longevity as well, right?
Correct.
There's a little bit, just like at our home, the LED light bulbs cost more, but they, supposedly last longer.
Exactly.
Okay. So just want to make sure on that. And I think you explained the well line replacement. That's great. Now I understand what that is. All right. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well done. Counselor Lesser?
I had some questions about the list, the proposed line item modifications that's in the staff report itself. And I have my notes based on the numbered items in the staff report.
Okay.
Should I go through them? So
What page is that? I'm sorry.
This is on number four of the staff report, which would be 164 of the agenda packet.
Thank you.
So should I just start running through them, and maybe you know, and maybe you won't?
Absolutely, yes.
With regard to item number five, proposed line modifications, gateway monument sign replacement, this is for all of the signs, or just for certain ones?
I think it's envisioned to be the, the gateway, so the main entrances to the, to the city, and then monument, monument signs at major parks and recreational facilities.
Okay. Number nine, the Mariposa Fitness Station, park course equipment replacement. I just wanted to confirm exactly where that's going to be?
That's replacing the existing station that's on the Veterans Parkway, just across from, from Bonds.
Okay. That's something I spoke to the city manager about. Good. Item number 15, the school district project. I wanted to better understand what that project is.
It is, it is a funding source that the city provided to the, to the school district to do a project, a CIP-type project of their choice. So we had, we had been providing, it was $250,000 a year, to the school district for the city and the school district to decide together what that would fund.
So it says reduce by $250,000 because there's no specific project, or because the project has been selected is less than the funds that were allocated?
The purpose of that was that there is no guarantee that we would be funding CIP projects every year for the school district. So that is subject to an annual meeting with the, with the ad hoc group. And then that funding can happen once that's identified.
Helpful. Thank you. Number 17, solar power installation at city facilities. Does this include the new reservoir north of the big fields?
It does not. This is a new program that we established, actually, last year in the CIP to, to investigate and install solar panels where appropriate at city facilities. The first project in this, actually, we were, we were debating whether it could be the, the Scout House project might be a candidate for, for the first project, but that would need to be studied and decided.
Has there been an assessment of the new water storage facility? There have been concerns over the years of making use and opening up the water tower for outside vendors. But I'm just wondering to what extent for city solar power generation, whether the new storage facility might be a candidate?
I'm not aware of a, of a study of the, in that. I'm looking at our utilities division manager. You were, we're not aware of, of that study being done, but we could certainly look into that.
If counsel consents, or is of that same mind. Item number 20 is city hall heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, which is always fun when it's a little cool in here. What is the status of that project? Add 200,000 for phase two construction. What is phase two?
Yeah, this, this project was always split into actually four phases. The phase that we just completed was to replace the major equipment on the roof, the air handling units and the chillers. Those were replaced as part of the last phase, which has been completed. The next phase is to, to integrate each of the diffuser locations into a system that can be monitored remotely, which we have now, but it's old. There are better technologies for it. So there, there are physical devices that need to be installed in order to make that communication happen.
Okay. Do I see citywide security cameras? Is that item coming back for further discussion by counsel? So we should not just look at this number, which is fairly large here. But that'll be subject to further direction, counsel, correct?
Yes, absolutely. There is a, there are three phases that are established now at, at seven city facilities, and that's what we're working on now. Just those specific seven facilities. But this, this program, we're proposing to go beyond that and, and really beef up the, the security system here in the city.
Okay. Last question is more of one of process. So the recommendation by staff is to approve the five-year CIP projects list as presented. Does that mean that this is not going to come back in our budget meeting, dedicated budget meeting, which would be next week, that will be devoted to the operating fund? I mean, I'll look to you or the city manager. What was the plan for the presentation of the CIP along with the operating budget?
Yeah. The, so the recommendation for tonight is to either approve as shown, or to make recommendations that we will incorporate, and then come back on June 6th for, for formal approval. This is certainly can be discussed at the, at the work, at the study sessions as well.
Correct.
Thank you. Anyone else have comments, directions? I'll wrap up here, then go back to public comment. I like everything you put up here. The red ones obviously show the new proposals. If I could rank, going back to your page eight, slide eight, Catherine, please. There you go. I know we're not ranking them now, but when we come back June 6th, I will be ranking them. Where I want to see us go, what's our priority, what we, what do we need now? What's your highest priority? What's falling down? No, no, June 6th. June 6th, what do you need? What are your highest priority, what need versus want? What do you have to take care of right now on that list? And then a priority, I'm going to rank my number one at 28, security cameras. And no surprise, Director Lee or city manager Mo have been waiting on that one. And solar, what you could do, great, and electric vehicle charging, but there are going to be a list, hey, these are our priorities matching your priorities. What do you have to take care of now? What can you put off a year or two years? What we don't show here, the numbers are just numbers. There's no correlation here to priority, right? It's just numbers.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess I would say the things that we're proposing to do first are, are ones that we're proposing to fund next fiscal year.
One through, well, one through 10 and 12. Red.
Yes.
Oh, you mean the breakout sheet that you're holding there?
Yeah, it's different, I think. I can, would you like me to list off what those projects are?
Yes.
That we're proposing for funding next year?
Absolutely.
Yes. Okay. So it is the electrical vehicle chargers at Marine Avenue Park, the flooring at the police station, the synthetic turf replacement at Marine Avenue Park, rehabilitation of the Heights restroom building, renovations of the employee lounge here in city hall, the feasibility study for the aquatic center. Let's see. And the feasibility study for renovations here in council chambers. Of the new projects, those are the ones that we are, we are recommending funding for this coming fiscal year.
When you said, and I understand, I hear you, understanding funding, but priority meaning in my mind, which one are you going to tackle first?
Okay.
So when you come back June 6th, we want to hear from you and Director Lee, which ones you want to tackle first, and which one's a priority, and why? Is the flooring coming apart? Is something happening in these aquatic center? Can that wait six months? What are your priorities? And we need to see what those are. Then we can pick and choose, hey, we will approve these, but this is the order one to see them going through. Because that's what I'm looking at here, and say, okay, these are great. The ones in blue started, money's there, I got it. The ones in red, priority. So we can see where you're going along with it.
Yep.
So besides that, well done. Stand by for comments. I'm sure we're going to have a few. Thank you both. Public comment time, folks. Those of you who want to come talk about any item on the agenda here on their list from CIP funds, proposed projects, anyone? See none. How about Zoom comments, Martha?
Wow. Was a Dodger game on, Laker game? What's going on? Where's everybody?
Lakers and LFC.
Well, yeah, there is. All right. We'll close public comment, and we'll go to counsel. Counselor Holworth?
You know, I just want to say very, very simply, that was a fantastic presentation. And she's not even listening. She's a good staff member. She does her work. Okay.
Why don't you ask Catherine to step up?
Catherine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You weren't paying attention to the right stuff.
Trying to figure out the, the
No, I want to say how much I appreciate both the, all the information, although it could have been larger to Councilmember Apolitano's point. And, you know, the presentation, and also your command of the information. When they asked you a question, or we asked you a question, you knew exactly. And you were, you were really, really thorough. It's very impressive. So really appreciate that. And I really appreciate your comments about priorities. And she sort of gave us what she's asking. about priorities, and she sort of gave us what she's asking to be funded, and I liked where you were going with that, so that's all I got.
Well done. Anyone else have any comments?
Just very briefly, I echo Councilmember Hoerth's comments, I want to thank staff for the preparation of this list. One question I have for the council, really hearing what the mayor is getting at in terms of prioritization, I agree with that, nonetheless, I want to ask with a project which would be down the list, and that has to do with just the exploration of solar on top of the new water facility, is that something where staff would need more direction to come up with a feasibility study or would that be incorporated in the sums that are already proposed for allocation here?
We would need to identify funding to do a feasibility study like that.
Is there council support for that, and I'm not sure there is?
I can jump in for a second. Councilman Napolitano, when he was the mayor, I think even before that, I think Steve had asked for the feasibility, whether we could add, I'm not sure if you were here or not, loading up on top of the, you weren't here yet, I don't think, but loading up.
Two years ago.
Two years ago. Three years ago. It was talking about whether the new facility with the water could hold the weight of solar on top, it wasn't designed that way, but we asked, you would ask the question, could we go back with the design of adding solar on top of the new water facility?
So I believe that was before I arrived at the city.
It was.
My understanding is that that work has been looked at, I believe it came back, it's not feasible, but we will look into that and we'll bring that back.
That's all I'm asking. That'd be helpful, thank you.
Great.
Mayor Tim Franklin.
Okay, yes, short comments, thank you again for the very thorough presentation. The, the issue of, you know, of solar panels, I kind of also, what I didn't hear in this is the feasibility, the economic analysis of them. You know, I think we should go through the same thing that a homeowner does, you know, is this going to pay off? I mean, probably they will, but I would just feel good to see that because we're already getting, you know, 100% clean energy from.
CPA.
CPA, thank you.
Power Alliance.
I always want to go, yeah, so Clean Power Alliance. So in terms of, you know, the environment, we're already doing that, but I just want to see that in terms of paying an electric bill and having that cost afraid by solar panels, again, just go through, I don't expect to do it now, but just, you know, see it sometime, so that's one thing, and then just provide the detail of, you know, the dollars. I always look at this as if, you know, I was a homeowner and having to prioritize and do the same thing, and we've got so much money here, how are we going to get the best, you know, bang for the buck and getting things, you know, improved, you know, throughout our own home or throughout now the city?
Comments understood, as relates to the solar panels and whether they're economically viable, and that's a key part of the analysis that would have to happen for any of our facilities, and to be clear, that project is on the five-year list, but we're not looking to start any of that work until the third year, so that would be in fiscal year 26, so we have some time for that. And then I think your other comment relates to maybe some of the real estate that we didn't have on the slides to have titles and dollar amounts.
Right.
And so I think that's part of the limitation of our presentation, but those dollar amounts are in this 11 by 17 matrix, and so.
I didn't have.
And so, and I realize even at 11 by 17, it is, it is quite small, and so that, as it relates to how much we're looking to invest year by year, fund by fund.
Right.
That information is here, and it's also posted on our website for the public, and you know, mayor, as it relates to your comment on coming back with prioritization, we certainly can have, I think, more of a refined recommendation for you in that regard as in the following meetings, but I would say that our prioritization really reflects all the projects that we're looking for, either, we either have existing appropriations that are going to roll over or we're looking for new appropriations for next year, which I believe for next year, the total is $49 million, and so we're happy to, you know, somewhat rank those and really provide the council with a little more, but I think a lot of these are long-term projects, and while something might be the number one priority, it might take 12 months for us to complete, it might be, take 12 months for us to complete the first milestone associated with the multi-year project, and so, yeah, I wanted to clarify, you know, what the limitation is, I think, on that expectation.
That details exactly what I'm looking for. Are we funding it now to build a three or so now? Which one is the party you do now?
Got it.
And then to Mayor Tim Franklin's comments, he wasn't on council end, so he doesn't know the history of it, but I think four of us here were, when we bought the street lamps from Edison.
Right.
Public Works converted all of those to the, and so there is cost savings, I think projected in the 2017 staff report, you'll find, or staff can find it for you, projection on owning these street lights, here's the cost savings.
Okay.
If LED works out well, so I know we have that data in a prior staff report, it's there, and obviously they're working well, so that's good news. With no other council comments and the public comment closed, I need a motion or comments or not?
Yeah, what are we going to do? Let me see.
There's no motion needed, is there? Going to come back?
Well, direct staff to revise.
Do you want us to motion, do you want to provide direction?
So I think we'd like a motion, and if I'm, if I'm hearing the council right, I think you're generally happy with what we're proposing, and if we come back with a little more clarifying information during our public hearing on June 6th, assuming that clarifying information meets your approval, that you'd be willing to approve the CIP as we're presenting it today.
Understood, Hoerth, for a second. Councilmember Hoerth.
Well, I was, I was going to make a motion, but it sounds like the, the direction is provide the granular detail on some of the things that were mentioned, and come back with that highlighted in, is it June 6th, and we could accept it then, we could approve it then. So I'm not, I'm not making the motion now because I, sorry, I wanted to withdraw that, sorry, because it sounds like we're going to wait till then to make it.
I agree, yeah.
So.
I'm not prepared to.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I think what we also could do is we can come back at one of the study sessions later this month with that additional information, make sure that we're in sync with the council, and then we come back on the 6th with something that you're expecting.
Mr. Councilmember Lesser.
And that was going to be my comment as well, that's why I asked about process. Obviously, in the background of all of these discussions, ensuring sufficient funds to pay for some of these larger projects that we know we're going to have to do, whether it be the Jocelyn Center, whether it be Parking Lot 3, we're seeing the end of the useful life of these projects, and we have to really discuss how we're going to be able to fund some of these improvements, but I look forward to the further conversations, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well done. You have direction, we're good to go? We'll catch you at the next study session. Thank you, Roeth, for your report. Well done.
Thank you.
Next item, item 13, presentation of fiscal year 2023-24 proposed operating budget, Finance Director Sherian.
Evening, Honorable Mayor Montgomery and members of the city council. I'm Steve Sherian, Finance Director, here to present the fiscal year 2324 proposed budget. I hope you all had a chance to get this wonderful finance green binder.
Yes, we did. We read the more books.
Over 400 pages of reading.
Cliff Notes version.
Before I begin, I'd like to thank the department heads and budget leads for their dedicated work in putting this proposed budget process together and collaborative efforts that the team put forth with tonight's 2324 spending plan. I also want to acknowledge all the hard work and long hours put in by the finance, the budget development team, specifically Libby Brethauer, Marcelo Serrano and Julie Bonderchuk. And lastly, a thank you to the communications and civic engagement team and management services for all their support in helping put together this 400-page-plus document before you tonight. This year, we have a new refreshed look at the budget with the addition of new ClearGov Budget Builder software, which allows staff to compile the budget information in a format that is easily identifies required criteria for the GFOA and CSMFO budget awards. Although the look of the budget document is slightly different, the information charts and tables included are fundamentally the same. Sections within the budget will generally remain the same as the previous document in years, in previous years. The introduction, which is the city manager's message, which has the work plan items related within the budget, fiscal outlook and service delivery and personnel changes. The budget overview section talks about revenue and expenditures and CIP highlights. Fund summaries are next, and then department narratives, objectives, accomplishments and performance measures are in those department sections, and the five-year forecast and the capital budget summary at the end of the budget document. Tonight's presentation is an overview of revenues and expenditures. The budget study session on May 9th will drill down into department's operations, staffing and staffing changes with our built into this next year's budget as well as other items. We kicked off the budget process in January. The first step was the community budget priorities meeting, which was held on February 16th, about 50 attendees at the height of the attendance, and active participants provided comments and asked questions to staff. We did a budget survey, a very successful one this year, around 70 responses within the first week of the survey, with over 150 received for the survey before it closed, which was about four weeks. This was the best input we've ever had in my career as far as the budget survey. Communication and civic engagement team really pushed this out, this survey out to get so many responses, so we appreciate their efforts as well. The top five priorities that came from the budget are public safety, police and fire services, a maintenance of streets and parking lots, parks and field maintenance, homelessness, and rounding out the top five is outdoor dining on public property. The top three infrastructure projects that were emphasized in the survey were the water infrastructure maintenance and replacement was number one, number two was outdoor recreation facilities and parks, specifically Polywog, Live Oak, Sand Dune and Beck Pool, and the sewer infrastructure maintenance and replacement rounds up the top three infrastructure projects from the survey. The top three projects in general from the survey were Manhattan Heights Community Center, Jocelyn Center and Beck Pool. So tonight, May 2nd, is our proposed budget, as we're presenting it to you tonight, and again, it's just an overview of the document, and we'll really drill down in the budget study session. We have two budget study sessions on May 9th and May 23rd, and we'll also have another opportunity on May 16th at a regular council meeting to have potential budget discussions at that meeting, we'll have the item on there, so to give council at least three opportunities before we bring it back on June 6th for the budget adoption, that's the night, as well as the CIP goes in hand with the, hand in hand with the budget. So our spending plan supports city council priorities of public safety and maintaining essential services. Our revenues are stable, in many cases estimates are higher than pre-pandemic levels. City reaffirmed our AAA credit rating during the pension obligation bond process in 2021. An overall financial position allows us to reinvest in our infrastructure, maintenance and service levels in alignment with the community priorities as well as council work plan. Pending FEMA reimbursements, we started the FEMA reimbursement with $1.2 million back on September of 2020, about $300,000 of that initial reimbursement submittal was disqualified by FEMA. We still have six submittals totaling about $900,000 worth FEMA. We do have a bit of good news, this is of, for this progress we've had with FEMA, we have several in what's called final approval stage, but we have one that's in final obligation status, for $81,000, so pretty excited about that after a couple of years of working with FEMA to get that, so hopefully we'll be reporting back at some point with that item. So some highlights of funding included for one-time projects and work plan initiatives include consultant to develop comprehensive long-term outdoor dining and business use program for $250,000, historic preservation survey for $20,000, and that's out of the general fund, comprehensive parking management study, and that's out of the parking fund for $250,000, and that's done periodically about eight to 10 years, and out of the parking fund as well, the redesign and repurposing of the Metlocks Plaza Fountain, that's about So this is the citywide budget, revenues of $180 million, expenditures of $188 million, and then the general fund budget is revenues of $93.3 million and $92.8 million of expenditures, showing an operating surplus of $485,000. Oh, I'm sorry. That's, gadget slipped to slide five.
I thought you were just increasing your speed to make Steve happy.
No, 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 I was, my apologies.
So moved.
Thank you, city manager. Also moved, did I hear the?
No.
Oh, okay. The proposed, again, this is citywide, the proposed budget includes full impact of public safety positions added in the, in the current year, and that was, we started in November and during the mid-year budget capped those positions, so eight sworn positions, seven in police and one in fire, and then five civilian support positions, three in police and two in fire, and these will have a full impact for a full year budgeting for fiscal year 24. Service delivery investments across all funds, we have two new full-time positions being added to this budget, one's in community development, which is a permit technician, frontline, boots on the ground, as well as a associate engineer in, in public works, and we'll get into that more in detail as the departments present their budgets. We added part-time positions totaling $258,000, and those are, the majority are in public works and IT, few of those part-time positions are for, as Katie mentioned, for mandated and state, state mandated and federal mandated for stormwater, and then other staffing adjustments totaling nearly $50,000. That's mainly a placeholder for staffing adjustments in several departments to better reflect the scope of current work for their respective position, and includes reclassifications or upgrades which will be completed by HR. I'm going to go over this one. So general fund reserves include the financial policy of 20% of total budget operating expenditure, which is $18.6 million, economic uncertainty reserve is $4 million, and unreserved fund balance is projected to be $4 million at the end of fiscal year 24. The unreserved general fund is impacted by transfers out to other funds. We did a CIP fund, as directed by city council, we added $1 million for a one-time transfer for the senior and scout center. Stormwater fund continues to impact the general fund with a $2.7 million going for operations and critical capital projects. Street lighting and landscape fund has a subsidy of $293,000, again, to support ongoing operations. Transfers in, we get about $400,000 with our agreement with the county parking lots, and then we also, with the technology fund, we occasionally look at fund balance that accumulates in the technology fund, and we transfer that back to the general fund, and we're able to do that with $500,000. Other transfers out is a result of unfunded pension liability, typically we have a 60-40 split, 60% going to a pension stabilization fund and typically 40% go into CIP. This year, with the move to $1 million additional into the CIP to fund the scout house, we have the CIP $994,000 and $492,000 to the pension stabilization fund, and during fiscal year 24, once we deposit that $492,000, we'll have $3.3 million in our pension stabilization Each year, staff presents performance measures for various departmental programs. The GFOA recommends that programs and service performance measures be developed and used as important component of long-term strategic planning and decision-making as well as linked to governmental budgeting. Performance measures reflect budget goals, including fiscal responsibility, community engagement, safety and health of the community, and excellent municipal services. In addition to performance measures, each city department highlights notable workload indicators and activities that have been accomplished in the prior calendar year for 2022, which we'll get into during the budget study sessions as the department present those to you. These are citywide revenues, the largest revenue is the general fund, $93.3 million and 52% of citywide revenues, followed by special revenue funds, these are governmental funds such as gas tax, Prop A, Measure R, Measure M, and other funds that equate to $36.5 million, which is about 20% of citywide revenues. Enterprise funds. Enterprise funds, water, wastewater, parking and stormwater, it's about 15% at 27 million. And internal service funds, which are the insurance, information, IT fund, fleet management fund and building maintenance and operation, which is about 11% of citywide revenues at 19 million. These are citywide expenditures by department. The citywide expenditures are weighted towards public works department, which oversees significant capital projects in the CIP fund, water fund, wastewater fund, which is about 48% or $90 million of the expenditures. The next largest are public safety with police and fire, which are 28% or about $54 million of citywide expenditures. And the third largest is Parks and Rec, which is about $12 million. City find, city general fund revenues total about $93.3 million. The largest source of funds are the tax revenues such as property tax of 46%, roughly 42.5 million. Sales tax at 12%, about $11 million. Transit occupancy tax is at 8% at 7.25 million. And business license taxes, 5%, nearly $5 million of those general fund revenues. Service charges, which include plan check fees, parks and rec fees, fire services such as ambulance transports and inspections generate about $8.8 million, which is about 9% of our general fund revenues. And breaking it down in a visual graph here, our property taxes remain the large component of the general fund, 47% of general fund revenues. Compared to recent 2023 estimates, property taxes are estimated to increase by 1.8 million. Sales tax is the second largest general fund revenue source at 11.8% of general fund, which is expected to increase again from the fiscal year 23 estimates by $550,000. Business categories experiencing growth are general consumer goods as well as restaurants and hotels. Transit occupancy tax is expected to generate about $1.3 million over the current year estimate. This increase is attributed to the planned 2% increase, the TOT rate on July 1st, bringing the TOT rate to 14%.
Yay.
Business license tax is anticipated to increase by about $350,000 from the 2023 projection. This city issues about 6,000 business licenses annually. Historically, this revenue source has been stable for us with the business mix that we have and the taxing structure is based on gross receipts. Building permits and plan check fees for building permits and plan check services are expected to increase by $100,000 over 2023 estimates and is based on the number of recently approved plan checks, some permits and progress. And the parks and rec expected to increase by almost 500,000. Again, high demand for recreation offerings specifically in the tennis and popular pickleball. They're, they're just doing really well with those products. General fund expenditures by category, again, salary and benefits make up the largest portion of the general fund expenditures at approximately $55.6 million and 60% of the expenditures. Materials and services about 19.1 million, 21%, which includes contracts and professional services, departmental supplies and utilities. Debt service includes our POV payment at 5.5 million. And Marine Avenue debt service as well, 478,000. General fund expenditures by department, 57% of the, or 52.5 million of the general fund is dedicated to public safety. These expenditures support critical police patrol, police patrol investigations, traffic safety. Fire department expenditures, including fire operations, EMS, community risk reduction and support services, which include emergency preparedness. Parks and recreation at 13% or 11.5 million and community development at 8% at 7.8 million. And these, please keep in mind, these departments are greatly supported by user fees and charges and service charges. And public works accounts for over 10 million of the general fund expenditures and make up about 11%. These are general fund expenditures, salaries and benefits increased by 4.7 million. These are based on recent MOU and associated benefits. We built in a vacancy factor of 5%. This over the years have been 4%, but typically towards the end of the year, we, with all the vacancies and changes, probably closer to eight or 10%. Hard to tell, but we felt comfortable raising this to 5% to be able to build in a little additional savings and we'll know it's going to come in a little bit higher than that. So it'll have some built-in savings hopefully. General fund staffing adjustments, as I mentioned earlier, full impact of the public safety positions added this fiscal year. The two new positions that I mentioned, one in community development and one in public works. And then upgrades and part-time adjustments, which we'll dive into at the study session. Debt service includes a level debt payment of fixed payment of 5.2 million in our pension obligation payments. And we were able to mitigate those rising costs by doing the pension obligation bonds a few years ago. Otherwise you might be looking at $7 million there. Internal service charges are increasing by $2 million primarily due to the insurance, insurance reserve fund and IT chargeouts. Insurance fund chargeouts increasing due to higher insurance premiums. And then IT fleet and building maintenance chargeouts increasing due to increasing the CPI increases and material supplies, contract, professional service, and not to mention fuel cost. General fund expenditures, we are increasing by $802,000. This is due to inflation again. CPI increases for materials, supplies, professional services and utilities. Additional one-time contracts such as long-term outdoor dining, business use and contributing as well to the increase. We have legal services increased by 367,000. And the SBR PCA, which is the city's contribution, contribution towards regional communication are also increasing due to CPI increases. The RCC includes, includes all costs related into the regional public safety communication capabilities. This includes the INSB. That increases about $160,000. And the increases are offset, the material and service increases are offset by a reduction in a few areas as compared to prior years with one-time items or biennial costs such as elections. This chart displays a forecast based on revenues and expenditures. The transfers I mentioned earlier are not included in this chart. The general fund is structurally balanced when comparing core revenues and expenditures was estimated 2 to 3 million in surplus in the five-year forecast. And then where you see a big widespread there, part of that is when we did the pension obligation binds in 2021 and then 2022, we had the ARPA funds. That's why you see a little bit wider spread there. Our estimated general fund balance, this chart shows the five-year forecast. Sorry, general fund balances in total with each layer of reserves. For 2324, the fiscal financial policy in orange is 18.5 million. Economic uncertainty in yellow is 4 million and unreserved fund balance in green is 4 million. Financial policy is 20% of the adopted operating budget expenditures. If you take a look at 2526, we project having to utilize economic uncertainty reserve to support ongoing funds and subsidies for stormwater fund and street lighting with about $11 million in support from the general fund over the next five years. Additional mandates from state and federal guidelines for stormwater could initiate additional expenses and impact to the general fund. Without a successful Prop 218 vote, these fund subsidies will continue and fully exhaust the economic uncertainty, economic uncertainty reserves in 2627. In the last two years, unreserved general fund balance will be used to support these fund subsidies. Staff met with the finance subcommittee on April 20th to discuss potential revenue enhancements, including stormwater fee increase. Staff will be coming back next council meeting with the revenue enhancement discussion item in conjunction with the recommendations by the finance subcommittee. Seeing that we, we need some revenue, we did also take an item that's not built into the budget to the finance subcommittee and it was considered and voted on to bring forth, bring forth to this council meeting as discussion. So periodically we do take a look at our fees and fines. The last time we increased parking citations were 2015 and that was from 50, from 48 to 53 dollars. We did a survey as we typically do. We try to gauge how we're doing with other cities and we found that we can increase it by, from 53 to 55 dollars. And that would generate about $166,000 in revenue growth. And if you're looking at the five-year forecast, that's relatively almost $800,000 at the end of the five-year forecast in the latter years. It's also important to note that we don't get that entire dollar figure. We don't get the $53 of citations. $15 of each citation goes to the county courthouse, construction, facilities and critical needs fund. Every year we send them about $900,000, so we don't get that entire dollar amount. So and potential increases could support increasing public safety support as well. In the recap, strong revenues and balanced budget. We're meeting essential services that are maintained. Reinvestments aligned with community priorities and the work plan items, the city council work plan items. Fund balances are within policy this year, but subsidies from the general fund to the CIP, stormwater and street lighting fund continues to draw down from the general fund balances. Our position, financial position allows us to reinvest and maintain infrastructure and service deliveries. So the next steps are to join us at the budget study session on May 9th, next Tuesday. Then we'll have another opportunity at the May 16th meeting, another budget study session as necessary. And then our hope is to a public hearing adopting the budget and the CIP together. Available to answer any questions you may have and thank you for your time.
Well done Director Schrader, and take a breath for a second here. Colleagues, any questions off the bat? If not, I'll start us off. Pushed my own button there. Director Schrader, let me start you off here. Couple of questions first. Can you go to your slide? It's hard to see because they printed right over the slide numbers. Slide number three, fiscal outlook. Mayor's probably got to start out, start us off here.
Lose a little bit.
Sorry. Everybody watching this at home to follow along. Slide three called fiscal outlook.
Page 724 of the agenda.
Martha's on it, I got.
There you go. The printer happened to print right over the page numbers. I'm just guessing on the slide numbers. There. Mayor Franklin, you beat everybody else there. Way to go, you're the first guy there. There it is. I'm glad depending FEMA reimbursement submittals, I'm, thank you for addressing that. It's one of the most often questions I get asked. Where are we on FEMA reimbursements? So the final obligation is at 81,000 out of 900,000 and we fixed that number, right? It's not 900,000 plus. It's fixed 100K, right? That's our total cost submitted to feds to date, 100K.
No, we, we submitted 1.2 million. They disqualified 300,000 based on their own criteria. But now we're down to about $900,000 that are still in, in six submittals. They're called applications. So those 900,000 dollars are in six different applications that are being reviewed in different stages of approval. So we've got several in final status, but we've got one in final obligation status. And we regularly are meeting with FEMA representatives. And you know, they have a lot of turnover as well. Like we get to know one manager and then we get an email, I'm turning you over to this person. And then we engage with that person. So we're fully engaged with FEMA, but I feel good about the $81,000 being in final, final obligation status.
Good, that's a trivia question. I really did submit it was 1.2 million, now we're down 900K. So that's good. The reason I wanted you and traffic engineer to hear this next question, on the next slide over, on the budget overview, talk about comprehensive parking management study, 250K. I know it's paid, who pays for it? My question was, if the dining deck group comes back and in theory approves and council agrees with dining decks, wouldn't it mess up the whole parking study? Should we either delay that study? But I wanted to hear from you or.
I'll let Eric.
Traffic engineer, talk about that before I circle.
But I think this is slated for further into the year, into the spring, late spring.
One of the questions I didn't, I did not submit earlier, my apology. I circled it and forgot to ask either Director Mizakarian or traffic engineers.
We actually think it's very timely because we need to do this as we are working on our outdoor dining program. We are going to be evaluating parking options and that's a big component of our, of our review and our proposals for outdoor dining. And this ties in perfectly because we want to understand what can we, how, what is the parking demand right now? And what are some strategies that we could use even in the outdoor dining program to improve the parking options in downtown? And are we charging enough for those parking spaces? And do we need to charge more, which of course helps us with our funding?
Did you want to add anything?
Sure.
Thank you, that's exactly right. Eric Zampf, you're city traffic engineer. It's been 14 years since our last downtown parking study.
I remember.
Remember? And so this one is actually includes the entire city. And so we'll be doing a couple of different seasons, which is appropriate. If we can get it, hit the ground running, we can do one during the summertime. So that would be great. And then that will dovetail into the long-term outdoor dining effort. As far as if we have available spaces, if we can make use of any remote parking spaces or parking lots for the use of overflow parking or employee parking in the downtown or the north end. Give us some recommendations for some opportunity sites maybe, so.
Great, that was.
And it'll all be done before the outdoor dining effort finishes.
The second question was the citywide, they answered that. My third question, the last question on parking was, is the study comprehensive enough to say, if decks go in Plan A, here's our plan, creatively or not, or not? If they're not put in place, Plan B. It gives you two options on that parking plan.
It will absolutely include that scope.
Fantastic, thank you.
Could I, while they're standing there, Mr. Through the bear?
Yes.
Since they're standing there. But parking, and this relates to the parking and to the outdoor dining. Another study that I've heard talked about is a traffic study for downtown, right? Like, is there any thought of doing some sort of traffic study along with the outdoor dining committee? So that, you know, like whether, you know, you change directions, you know, one-way streets, et cetera. Is that something that is being, you know, considered and is a possibility?
Yes, it is included in our scope for our outdoor dining consultant, parking and traffic.
And so that would be where that would go.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you both for that, sorry in the gap. Director Schrader, I've got two more for you. Just suggestive, because I get so many questions that I wouldn't think anybody would look at this differently. On slide 12, page 733. Martha puts it up there. Can you put next to property tax, B as in billion, A as in millions, whatever they are? Because I, people look at me and what is that question? And I said, wait a minute, I didn't put a tag next to it in parentheses what they are, billions or millions. Now people look at it differently and I look at it, I know what they mean. But people that read it, that don't read finances the same way we do, don't know what you mean. What does that number mean? 42.6.
I appreciate that, we can.
Constructive for your next time. And my last one is, you and Libby and your team did a great job writing on pages, slide 16 and 17 about the narrative, general fund expenditures, but you're missing the two on revenue. If you could write the same kind of comments you wrote about general fund expenditures narrative, it'd be helpful behind your revenue pages, talk about revenue. What you did under expenditures, same narrative, I mean, different narrative, but the same type of explanation as what you did. First time readers of our, of our budget don't understand that part of it. They look at what you did expenditures, they're missing the narrative. Be helpful suggestion for your next presentation.
Okay.
Does that make sense? I think that's all I have on my side. Councilor Hope, you're still up.
Oh, I, no, I withdraw my time.
Councilor Lesser?
I'm going to wait for our budget study session for my questions.
All right. Mayor Tim Franklin?
So on slide number five and within the report, you talk about the increase in FTE for public works. Let me get to it down here. Two new, two new full-time positions totaling $215,207. And I think one of them was going to be public works. Because in the public works presentation, there was something about needing a new engineer to oversee things. And what is the other one?
The other one is a permit tech in community development.
Oh, that's right.
A much needed permit tech, frontline.
Right, so, so going back to public works. We, we just authorized 11 new positions. You know, do I want to say last fiscal year or?
Yes.
Last count, yeah. So that was not included in that, in those 11 positions or?
Correct, it was not. These are net new positions for the new fiscal. These are net new positions for the new fiscal year.
Okay.
Those other positions were completely public safety. They were public safety, eight sworn and five civilian.
But then public works, did we do something with public works?
Yeah, I think you're referring to last fiscal year.
Yeah, the last fiscal year.
And we plan on covering the staffing at the budget study session, and we can cover the justification for these positions.
Okay, great. And interesting on the sales tax, revenue going up on slide twelve, going back to that. So, so the sales tax, sales and use tax in the upper right-hand corner. So we see in 2022, it's sort of reflecting what, you know, the rebound from, you know, from the lockdown, from COVID, ten point five. Why such a big budget increase, you think, to eleven and one?
Well, we're seeing a lot of activity, and we meet with our consultants, HDL. They're known industry-wide, help a lot of municipalities with this. We meet with them quarterly, we get a lot of quarterly updates. A lot of our consumer goods, restaurants and hotels are doing a lot better. But we've seen really good activity with the Manhattan Village Mall. So part of, you're seeing that, that's now in full progress, and it's got, you know, they're, I don't know how, they're close to being full vacancy, but we're really seeing the power of that mall.
Okay, got it. That explains it then. Okay, great. And then business license tax, the increase, I saw somewhere in the report that it increased sixteen percent or something, business license fees?
Yeah. The business license fees are a little not structured to flow evenly because council deferred during the COVID. We deferred some of the business licensings from twenty-one to twenty-two, and it caused some of the percentages to be higher than most. But typically, we increase our business license tax by CPI. We use a September CPI year-over-year, and that's the mechanism that we raise it by. So it's usually, you know, around the neighborhood of five to six percent increase. It's not very much, year-over-year.
Okay. And is that a policy that the staff put in, or did we vote on that? Did a council vote on that?
It's in the municipal code.
The municipal code?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I think it was enacted in nineteen seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine. All right, great. Thank you.
Councilor Polatano? All right. No more, sorry, Councilor Lesser?
Just quick follow-up on a question by Mayor Tim Franklin, and then your response. Looking at the business license tax graph, you see the number of 2022 actual of five point two dropping to 2023's estimate of four point five. And I'm sorry, can you repeat? I was listening to what you said, but I wasn't sure if it addressed the drop.
Yeah, the drop was, the five point two was elevated because of all the deferring, council took the ability to help the businesses and deferred collections, and that just pushed everything forward to the one year, and that's why you see. So we're leveling off now where we're estimating about four point eight, four point nine million for 2024. And that'll put us, that'll put us in a good spot.
So that is representative of the scale of this one time?
Correct. And you'll see the COVID impact in nineteen, impacted in nineteen, in twenty and twenty-one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No more council questions. We'll go to, thank you, Director Schrader. Public comments? Anyone here talk about our budget and how lucky and blessed we are to have an actual positive budget? Seeing none in the room, how about Zoom, Martha? No one on Zoom? We'll close public comment. Counsel? Looking for direction here, correct, Mr. City Manager?
We don't need direction tonight, actually. We can go to the study session next week, and you can have the department presentations and ask questions at that point.
I'm just reading what it says. Discuss and provide direction. I'm just making sure I'm reading what it says.
Unless you want to approve it tonight and...
We're done.
That's our direction. North, all right.
Great.
With that, we're going to move to, thank you, staff. Thank you, well done, everybody. City council requests or reports, including AB twelve thirty four reports. Anybody trampled anywhere? Mayor Franklin, did you go anywhere in the last two weeks?
No.
City business, I mean.
This is, sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
It's not quite an AB one, two, three, four report, but Councilmember Lesser and I are on the website redesign team. And at the end of the week, there will be a survey up on our website for residents, you know, to say what you like about the website, what you'd like to be different. And I encourage my colleagues to also participate in that survey and give us...
I will.
Yes, if you can find it. But no, so please do. I, you know, so we can, we won't know, we won't know that it's you.
At the next meeting, do the community announcements of that term.
Yeah, I will, I will.
And it's actually up right now, prominently displayed on the website.
But it'll still be up, and I'll make it, I'll make it...
It still counts as a quasi-report. Future agenda items, future agenda items, and T. Councilor Hohwitz, future agenda items?
Good, good, my button. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I really appreciate all the educational efforts that the city, with Mayor Tim Franklin's efforts on e-bikes. But I am concerned with summer coming, school letting out, that we're not quite doing enough for e-bike safety. And so I'd like to bring back agenda item. Are there things that other cities are doing? Can we, can we do a month of heavy enforcement before school lets out? Because I, it has, it might be anecdotal, but, oh my goodness, I have just seen an awful lot in the last couple of weeks of near misses personally, and hearing from my doctor of the thing. So I'd like to bring it back, something back to council to discuss e-bike safety in our community.
Do I see a second for that?
Second?
Second?
I would second it unless...
There you go. Yeah, I would second it, but just cite and impound. Just do it.
Yeah, no, I, that's, I...
Cite and impound.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Parents come and get them.
So to answer the question, Mr. Attorney, I would say we have a second. Councilor Lesser for that item.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so that's beyond a future agenda, and you can bring that up again.
However, in the meantime, we can certainly do more enforcement.
Because it's, we should, I think, because summer's coming, and hopefully the nice weather. So thank you for that.
Yep, and that's something we don't need council direction or a vote on.
Right. But I still want to come back.
Chief Johnson, you want to say anything from down here?
Captain Enriquez.
Oh, Captain Enriquez, my apologies, sir.
More warnings.
Perhaps they were warned.
Good evening, Mayor Montgomery and city council members. I am Andrew Enriquez, your field operations captain for the police department. It's a great question. Thank you for bringing it up. I can give you some of the information we've done. And when we talk about summer, I can tell you what we've done is the school year. So the school year, we've done a lot of enforcement, we've done some education, some outreach with students. Our school resource officers have actually had, year-to-date for the school year, seven different assemblies at the schools where they've presented on e-bike safety and then also wearing helmets and rules of the road. They've also done some, they have one more scheduled for this month before school gets out. And they've actually worked with Parks and Rec to get something for the summertime, some more outreach for that. In addition to that, our traffic bureau has been coming in every weekend in April, and they plan to do every weekend in May, some added enforcement around metlocks and some of the more high, highly trafficked areas that the kids seem to frequent on the e-bikes. And then Six and Valley gets extra attention with...
Six and Valley is really bad.
Yeah, with regular traffic bureau and also patrol officers are out there writing, writing tickets and educating and doing some enforcement out there.
How much are the citations again?
They are issuing citations.
How much?
How much?
What do they cost?
I believe two hundred and thirty-three dollars is what it is right now, but I'm not sure entirely. I can get back to you on that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, Captain. Thank you very much.
So just as an add-on to that, I was just doing the calculations of how many children we've done the training, you know, with the, with the PD school resource officers and the like. So between junior guards, MBMS, the elementary schools, the hometown fair, we've done sixty-six hundred students have attended the e-bike safety program.
Okay, well, then I'm sure...
Your motion was made. You've got a second.
Great.
You can't talk about too much. Thank you very much, Councilmember. We appreciate that. Councilor Lesser, your button has been pushed.
I wanted to follow up on a comment by mayor, excuse me, by former mayor, Napolitano, Councilmember Napolitano, regarding the board building appeals. This has been an issue that I've dealt with in my twenty years on council, and I know some of the more senior members have dealt with it even longer. And that is, can we come up with greater jurisdiction for what they might consider? But let me just add to it, what I'd welcome staff bring back is, when we've dealt with this in the past, on prior councils, there's been express, express role for them based on what the state law provides. But I'm just wondering to what extent we might evaluate potential additional roles as a city, and what else can we have them do that is real work, as opposed to just giving them the title and then they're never having a meeting?
I have first and a second, my counsel, item as well.
Thank you.
And when else, any future, future agenda items? Anybody else, future agenda items? All right, seeing none. And City Manager report?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
City Attorney report?
Nothing tonight, except for a lengthy closed session announcement.
Right, and before we do, we're going to go out of order here, because I want to make sure people are awake for this next item. We're going to adjourn here, and then we're going to, instead of doing it later, we're going to adjourn it now. But we'll all go to a closed session afterwards. Just going to add a order for the adjournment announcement.
Mr. Mayor, before we do that, I will need to make an announcement before we go into closed session. Do you want me to do that now?
No, wait till the adjournment's over, then make an announcement, and then a closed session.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so technically, it's not really an adjournment, but you're just letting the public know that we'll be coming back after the closed session. There'll be an announcement, and that's the end of the meeting.
Correct. If I'm going out of order, it's not really adjournment, but it, you normally, folks, we have an announcement for adjournments. Tonight, we're going out of order because we're going to a closed session. We're doing it early so people can actually listen and hear what we have. So we have an adjournment item. Councilor Polatano is going to do it, so I ask you all to stand, rise.
Thank you, Your Honor. And, you know, the point here is that when we come back to adjourn, it will be in the memory of, I'm sorry, choking up already. Elizabeth Louise Beverly, otherwise known by many, to many as Betty Lou Beverly, she passed away on April eleventh, twenty twenty-three, one week short of her ninety-eighth birthday. She was born in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, in April, on April seventeenth, nineteen twenty-five. Her father was the organist and choir director at the Second Presbyterian Church of Pittsburgh. And before she passed, Bay Lou was fortunate enough to fulfill a dream of many years when she was able to return to Pittsburgh to see and hear the organ that her father had played back in the twenties, and to attend services at the church last summer. As many people know, Bay Lou married Robert Graham Beverly. He's a former tennis partner of her oldest brother, James, when they were in high school back in Pittsburgh, while he was in the Marine Corps at Camp Pendleton. There were more than a few stories, I guess, on how it all happened, how they met, but the last one that the family knows is that they ran into each other walking down Wilshire Boulevard in West LA, and he invited her out for a drink. And apparently, it worked because they married and had four children, Barbara, Bill, Bob, and Brian. And many of you know Robert Graham Beverly as Bob Beverly Senior, who served as mayor here in Manhattan Beach, as well as a state senator for many years representing the twenty-sixth district. After marrying, Bay Lou worked at UCLA while Bob studied to be a history teacher. They first lived in a guest house behind the home of Dr. Robert Simon and his wife on Buckingham Street in West Los Angeles, where Bob mowed lawns for rent, and where they met Justice Minor Moore, who convinced Bob Beverly to go to law school, and for whom Bob clerked in the court. Bay Lou played piano, loved painting, creating mosaics and learning ballet. She collected colorful folk art and traveled the world, even working as a travel agent for a time. She was a partner in a gift shop called The Lemon Tree in Manhattan Beach with her great friends, Pat Keen, Kathy Fels, and Jean Coston. She was a proud Dolphin and later Neptunian, and active in the sister city program in local and state politics. She even served on the commission of California, establishing working relationships between California and Baja California, Mexico. She loved meeting new people and always found the good in everyone. She rarely talked about herself and never talked behind people's backs. Instead, she bragged about the successes of whoever was not in the conversation, was particularly proud of her grandchildren and their many accomplishments. She was blessed with a long and wonderful life and was sorry, though, to lose her husband for her and many friends along the way. But after a relatively short separation, she will join them in eternity resting beside her beloved Corporal Bob, Mayor Bob, and Senator Bob. She was a true matriarch here in Manhattan Beach, whose reach went well beyond the Beverly family, well-known, well-liked and loved by many. And so in her name, we will adjourn the meeting when we return. And in the meantime, if we can have a moment of silence in her memory.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. At this point, we're going to make an announcement, City Attorney Barrow, for the recess. Councilor Lesser will start us off with his comments.
Well, I have a statement regarding the third item on the closed session agenda, Thompson versus Manhattan Beach. Mr. Mayor, in consultation with the city attorney, I'm recusing myself from participating in the matter. I do not have a conflict of interest under provisions of the Political Reform Act. Rather, I seek to avoid a perception of a conflict because the plaintiff is providing my wife and me with assistance and information regarding a wholly separate matter, utility undergrounding in which she has expertise. Out of an abundance of caution, I'm recusing myself and will not participate in the council's decisions concerning the matter. In fact, I will leave the room when the matter is discussed.
Thank you. City Attorney Barrow?
Yes, so tonight, we have three pieces of existing litigation. They're, all three are identified on the agenda pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine, five six point nine, D one. We also have a conference with our labor negotiators with respect, pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine, five seven point six. And it's up to the mayor, but we may want to do the Thompson one first. It's entirely up to you.
I would agree. We'll do that one first, recess in the closed session. Further announcements, or you're good there?
Yeah, that's it. I'm done with the announcement, and Councilmember Lesser will hang out outside in the room, and then we'll call them in for the other closed sessions.
Perfect. This time, we're going to recess at a closed session. Thank you all for being here.
You're going to go back now.
You're going to go back now?